And see if we can do a roll call. Brian, would you do that or Steve?
Sure. Ms. DeBachnick?
Here.
Ms. Lankowski?
Here.
Ms. Lingalis?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
Mr. Schulman?
Here.
Mr. Bryce?
Here.
And Ms. Wells?
Here.
Okay, have a quorum.
Did you miss Mr. Cantor?
No, he said.
Oh, I think I got him. Sorry.
Then Galen, I think you can see everyone at least until Darius arrives, if he arrives.
Okay, good. Thank you. Thank you. Then we'll alternate when Darius arrives. Okay, well, our first matter is, first of all, I'd like to switch a little bit of the agenda around. Do the first two public hearings. And then insert the two referrals from the city of Norwalk. And then do the third public hearing. Apparently, there are people from the first two public hearings, it's only stay for a relatively short period of time, so you want to get those in. But easily, Attorney Blank can stay. And we would normally put the referrals from the city of Norwalk first, because they go quickly. But today we'd be moving them to third. Does anyone have an objection to that change? Excuse me. First matter is 2025-33 SP 204 Flax Hill LLC. Care of Edward Gormley. Excuse me.
Galen, are you all right? Do you want me to read out this one for you?
Yeah, could you?
Yeah, of course. So this is a 2025 SP-204 Flax Hill LLC. Edward Gormley, 204 Flax Hill Road, Special Permit for Historic Preservation Development to Renovate Existing Historic Building, Demolish a Separate Non-Historic Building, and Construct a New 21-Unit Multifamily Building for a Total of 53 Units on Site, 36 Units Existing and Other Site Improvements. Public Hearing, Report, and Recommended Action.
Back in a while, okay?
And we'll turn it over to Attorney Blank to start the presentation. I believe you're representing this applicant.
Yeah, yes, thank you. And I think maybe, maybe the problem is Galen needs a different background. I think it's all the pollen. Got to try.
That definitely can be it.
All right, well, so that'll be the hook. Actually, my colleague, Emma Dignati, from my firm is going to take the lead on this and and I'll be on as well, but I'll kick it over to Emma.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Emma Dignati, and with Adam Blank, we represent Workforce Partners LLC through one of its entities, 204 Flax Hill LLC. I'll refer to both of them collectively as Workforce Partners this evening. Workforce Partners is the owner of approximately 1.4 acres of property located at 204 Flax Hill Road, which I will call the property. And we're here on a special permit modification. The property is located in the CD3 Zone, and the main structure on the property, which is a historic home called The Mansion, is currently listed on the local historic resources inventory. Going to share my screen to show you an aerial view of the site. Okay. We've provided staff with copies of the certified mail and certificates of mailing that were sent out, both for the notice of special permit application and the notice of public hearing on this property. Additionally, we've sent staff a picture of the sign posted on the property notifying the public of this evening's hearing. Under the Norwalk zoning regulations effective prior to February 19th, 2024, you granted Workforce Partners a special permit. It was SP number 5-20 for 204 Flax Hill to perform a historic preservation development at the site, including the rehabilitation of an existing building and the demolition and reconstruction of another building on site with additional housing units. That work has not commenced. Since the prior approval, you adopted entirely new zoning regulations, and Workforce Partners has revised its plans for the 204 Flax Hill development based upon those new regulations. Workforce Partners now files this special permit modification application to redesign the previously approved new building while also continuing to rehabilitate, renovate, and preserve the existing mansion historic structure on the site. In fact, as you will see from the plans, we are now proposing more robust upgrades to the mansion house, including a new simulated cross gable on the facade and west elevation, the recreation of the wraparound porch, and replacement of the dome at the top floor to accentuate the structure's architecture and prominence. And we're also proposing to remove the unsightly asphalt parking area that's currently located directly in front of the mansion house. The goal is to ensure that the mansion, as one of Norwalk's important historic resources, is located within a cohesive, aesthetically pleasing, and culturally significant development while continuing to provide housing to those who need it most. So I'll first overview the applicant and the project with you, and then we're going to hear from Andy Sumalidis on civil engineering and landscaping with LandTech. We'll hear from Mark Hopper, a historic architect with Crosskey. And we'll hear from Brian Dempsey, a traffic engineer with DTS. Todd Bryan, our historic consultant, is present, as is Ed Gormley on behalf of ownership. And they can answer questions you may have, but they're not going to be giving a formal presentation. So let's talk about Workforce Partners. Workforce Partners is an owner-operator of lowercase w workforce housing units. It purchases dilapidated properties in need of capital improvements, updating and modernization, and then it leases those revitalized units back at modest rents to the working class of Norwalk. It specializes in filling the housing gap for those that can't afford luxury market rate units but who also don't qualify for affordable or deed restricted housing. Typical units owned by Workforce Partners are provided to those earning 60% to 100% of the average area median income. And rents are always discounted for everyday heroes, including teachers, firefighters, police, EMTs, municipal employees, and others. Workforce Partners concentrates its operations in Norwalk, where it owns numerous multifamily properties, including 132 Flax Hill, 138 Flax Hill, 50 Connecticut Avenue, 30 West Avenue, 35 Place Street, 104 South Main Street, 143 and a half South Main Street, 8 Union Avenue, 21 Clinton Avenue, 14 Bedford Avenue, and 29 Ferris Avenue. Now, as for the proposed improvements to 204 Flax Hill, the property currently consists of four multifamily buildings and a total of 36 units of housing. Workforce Partners proposes to renovate and rehabilitate the historic existing structure, replace a second building on the property, and add a total of 17 additional units. As a result of the increase in unit count by 17, the applicant proposes to add one more workforce housing unit for a total of five workforce housing units in the 53-unit development, and to pay an inclusionary zoning fee for the remaining three units. As you know, under your historic preservation regulations, the purpose of which is really to encourage the preservation of structures like the mansion, certain of the zoning requirements may be waived or modified. On the special permit application in front of you, we are asking for a modest increase in density from what is normally allowed in the CD3. In the CD3, we are allowed, as of right, to build one unit for every 1,650 square feet of land area. We are proposing a 30% increase in density, so really a 30% reduction in land area per unit to one unit for every 1,170 feet. We're not seeking any relief from any setback regulation, or parking, or any other regulation at all. Just the modest increase in density permitted under the historic preservation regulation. The increase in density will allow us to invest substantial sums of money into improving the interior and exterior of this site and preserving its historic significance. Let me tell you a little about the mansion house and our proposal for it. The mansion on the property was constructed around 1890. It's constructed in the Queen Anne style, and it originally had an asymmetrical cross gable plan with a domed tower, a full width, one-story wraparound porch, and a port-cochere. A 1956 fire destroyed the original roof and the dome, and the porch was removed at a later date, although we proposed to refurbish that porch as part of this application. Nevertheless, a substantial amount of the interior architectural detail remains. The mansion was the home of a local coal, lumber, and mason supply merchant, John J. Ferris. Mr. Ferris also served as the director of the City National Bank. He was the manager of the South Norwalk Savings Bank, and he served in the Connecticut House of Representatives in 1886 and in 1887, and then in the State Senate for the 13th District from 1893 through 1896. As I mentioned previously, we're looking to renovate and rehabilitate the mansion, although the mansion will still offer six housing units after renovation, as it currently does. They're all one bedrooms. Like I said, these renovations will include a new simulated cross gable on the facade and the west elevation, recreating the wraparound porch, and replacing the dome at the top floor. Refurbishment of the wraparound porch was not a condition of the prior approval, but we have added that change as a part of this application. Flipping to the zoning location survey now, Buildings 2 and 4, which are these two, if you can see my cursor, are going to remain unchanged, and they'll continue to provide eight and 18 housing units respectively. Building 3, which currently contains four housing units, two one-bedrooms, one two-bedroom, and one three-bedroom, is going to be demolished, as was previously proposed and approved, and it will be replaced with a new structure designed to match the historic architecture of the mansion, which will contain 21 units, 18 one-bedroom apartments, and three two-bedroom apartments. The applicant is also proposing to remove the unsightly parking spots that are at the front of the property up here. And this was not a condition of the prior approval, but it will improve the aesthetic appeal and historic significance of the development. The renovations will incorporate many of the lost elements that are the hallmarks of the Queen Anne style, so as to recreate the feeling of the era when the mansion was among a row of other similar residences owned by some of Norwalk's most prominent citizens. The just under 1.5-acre site is going to be landscaped with trees, shrubs, perennials, grasses, and ground covers of various types. The project will also include numerous drainage improvements, which Andy Sumalidis from LandTech is going to describe shortly. A traffic impact study was performed by DTS Provident Design Engineering, which analyzed the impact of the proposed additional units compared to what was previously approved. DTS Provident concluded that the proposal will not generate a significant amount of traffic, nor will it have a significant impact upon the current roadway operating conditions. The Norwalk zoning regulations initially require 1.3 parking spaces per unit, which would correspond to 69 required spaces for this development. However, because the property is located within an eighth of a mile of the train station, only 52 parking spaces are required. And if we were to seek a 30% downward adjustment permitted under the historic preservation regulations, only 37 parking spaces would be required. Nevertheless, we're proposing to offer 52 parking spaces. In other words, we're providing the required number of parking spaces, which is 52, without seeking any reduction for historic preservation. In terms of CEAC review, the building department, fire department, and health department have all given their sign-offs. DPW and WPCA provided some minor comments, which we have no issue with, and we have been in contact with those departments. We also received comments from TMP. TMP had a couple comments, one we had no issue with, one we object to, which is their concern with the parking proposed, even though it far exceeds that, which might otherwise be required on a historic preservation project. Under your regulations, like I just said, because this site is located within an eighth of a mile of the train station, we're given, as of right, that 25% reduction in parking spaces from the baseline, 1.3 per unit, which takes us to the 52 required spaces which we're providing. And like I said, we could seek a further historic preservation adjustment and offer even fewer spaces, and we're not proposing that. TMP does not have the authority to require more parking than your regulations require. TMP's final comment had to do with our proposed site driveway being off-center from the intersection of Taylor Avenue and Flax Hill Road, showing a comparison of the existing driveway location here and the proposed driveway location in the bottom image on the screen. As a result, we moved the drive aisle to where it is in this bottom image to square it with the intersection. This is the only curb cut on the property, and it replaces the curb cut that we're abandoning up here. You received a staff memo in this application, which does not identify any problems or areas of concern. It suggests coordinating with DPW and TMP to consider aligning the proposed driveway location with Taylor Avenue, which we've done. We are aware of a comment from Keith Wilberg, the owner of the neighboring property at 208 Flax Hill Road, and an engineer himself. He had a concern over the placement of some of the drainage components on the site. Andy Sumalidis of our team has been in contact with Mr. Wilberg, and we revised the location of the components at issue, which we believe fully satisfies Mr. Wilberg's concerns. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to the rest of the team. However, when they finish up, I'll have some final remarks before we close our presentations. First up, we're going to hear from Andy Sumalidis, the civil engineer, to go through the details of the site plan that I haven't covered. Next up is Mark Hopper, a historic architect, who's going to go over for you the architectural work proposed for the property. And finally, we'll have Brian Dempsey on traffic.
Attorney Dignati, if I may.
Yes.
You made reference to discounting rent for local heroes, teachers, police officers, that sort of thing. What exactly do you mean by that?
And a policy of Workforce Partners is to offer an additional discount on rent to those everyday heroes. I don't have the number or the amount of the discount off the top of my head, but we could certainly get you that information.
Okay, thank you.
Ed May now. He's on.
Yeah, that's typically $25 to $50 a month, Commissioner Schulman.
Oh, all right. Thank you very much.
Can I follow up on that for a minute?
Sure.
I know you listed in the narrative a list of other properties that you own or administer with the same setup, where you try to have all the units at 80% with this extra discount. I can't seem to find your website. Is, do you have a website where people can apply for those?
Yep.
Are these available to everybody in Norwalk?
Yes, the website is livingive.com. I think you're muted if you're trying to speak.
Thank you. I didn't realize you were, IVE is your, is your company. Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
If nothing further, then I'll turn it over to Andy Sumalidis.
Good evening. My name is Andy Sumalidis. I'm a principal at LandTech at a Westport. I want to first thank you for allowing us to go first, as I have another hearing later, so thank you for accommodating us. So I'll be brief. Emma did a great job. Just to orient you again, this is the existing condition survey. Flax Hill Road over here on the left-hand side, on the west side. Those three buildings, as mentioned earlier, access to the site is through this curb cut for a small parking lot here in front of the historic structure, as well as an easement over the adjacent property to get into all these rear spaces. There's about 38,000 square feet of impervious surface, as you see it on the plan today. Not many drainage improvements currently exist on the property. Stormwater runoff goes, goes off untreated, predominantly off this site. Go up to the layout. So what we've done here, what we're proposing to do is remove that parking, small parking court in the front of the property. From comments we've heard from TMP and DPW, we will align our new driveway curb cut to tee up with Taylor Ave and Flax Hill. Originally, we had it further south on the, on the property here along the frontage. This tees it up and allows, as cars stop at Taylor Ave, and we're stopping to come out of the site to see each other and make more safe turning movement, so we, we address that comment. So that, that predominantly shows the site layout in general. Here again is where the existing building is. That'll be torn down for the new, for the new structure. In terms of stormwater improvements, predominantly, the middle part of the site stays, remains unchanged. So all the work is mostly done to the rear of the property in terms of new asphalt, new buildings and the such. That equates to about 40,000 square feet of total impervious under proposed conditions. So you're looking at a 2,000-square-foot increase of impervious on 1.4 acres, so very little increase of impervious surfaces. So what's really driving some of the stormwater design is really water quality. So we're capturing all the water quality volume for all new impervious surfaces, capturing via roof leaders and gutters, various catch basins that pipe it to one underground system here, underneath the new parking lot, and then another underground system here behind the existing building. You heard earlier conversation regarding a neighbor, Mr. Wilberg, who's actually the town of Westport engineer, and we know that, we know him well, have a great relationship. We originally had that infiltration system sited here, so we moved it and put it here to any large storm events that go through that system, not to overflow and go on to the adjacent property. So, so we were able to address his concerns there as well. This is just our utility plan. We're going back and forth with DPW and WPCA regarding all the utility connections. Sites that are redevelopment sites and aren't, you know, complete tear-down rebuilds, it's usually a spider web of existing utilities, so we're working through those with the with DPW and WPCA. Here's our generic erosion incentive control plan. You know, temporary during construction, your typical construction access, sill fencing, wrapping the property, temporary stockpile, stockpile areas and the such. We don't anticipate massive earthwork on this type of, what we're proposing here on this redevelopment. And lastly, we did a very generic, I'd say, landscaping plan here. What we're looking to do is do some low-lying shrubs here in front of the historic structure to really let it flourish and not hide that value there. The necessary street trees, the necessary landscaped trees for the landscaped islands, and then an evergreen shrub here with some more shrubs in front of it. So again, we'll most likely engage with a landscape architect prior to, you know, zoning permit to really flush this out with further details. And then I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, we'll turn it over to Mark.
I'll just note that Commissioner Williams has arrived. Or has been here.
Thank you, Andy. My name is Mark Hopper. I'm a principal with Crosskey Architects. I was involved with, at 204 Flax Hill and over at 1 Elmcrest. I'll share my screen. Okay, can you see the rendering of the mansion building?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This is the same rendering that Emma showed you. We wanted to start off with this to explain that in our previous submission, we did go through historic review and approvals. The work on the mansion building and for this special permit is exactly the same with one exception, which I'd like to, which I'll highlight. The plan that's at the, at the top of the sheet is the existing layout. The plan at the lower sheet is our proposed floor plan modifications. It primarily indicates the outline of the porch. In this new proposal, we extended the porch about nine feet to comply with streetfront, current streetfront regulations. So that's really the only change to the historic, historic part of the building as part of this, as part of this special permit application. Again, existing front elevation that faces the street and existing on the left, proposed on the right, and you can see that this is where my cursor is. This is the slight addition, lengthening of the front porch to meet that streetfront regulation. Existing side elevation that's perpendicular to, to Flax Hill, the most prominent that will be seen because of view angles. Existing is on the left, and the proposed is on the right. Again, these are the exact same improvements that were part of the previous special permit application. This is, again, consistent with what we showed before. These are the materials. The, going back to a shingle siding material on the existing building, asphalt, shingled roofs, as well as the various trims that are going to be added to the building to, to provide architectural detailing, which is period to the, to the building, as well as a tri-color paint scheme for the exterior of the building. Moving on to the new building, the, this is a replacement of the existing carriage house. Again, the character color details of this building are very, very similar to the previous special permit application. Obviously, there's an addition of new units. So part of that addition is this area that I'm circling, circling with my cursor. It was a two-story addition with four units above parking. You can see parking below. This was part and parcel to the addition of units, as well as kind of sliding in another unit in the, the length of units that we had previously. So this is, this building is tucked into the hillside, so it's going back, it's two stories over parking on one side, and then on the, on the other side facing the adjacent condominium complex, as you'll see in elevations, it's, it's four stories, two, three and a half stories tucked into the side of the hill. So this is the, the lower floor plan. Again, tucked into the side of the hill with exterior wall facing the condominium complex that provides natural light and ventilation into the, into the units down below. Going up to the, the first floor, I'll say, you know, street level, parking level, main entrance is in the corner here. We show that there's six underbuilding parking spa, I'm sorry, four underbuilding We show um, that there's six under building parking spa, uh, I'm sorry, four under building, two adjacent and um, two under building parking spaces in this location for a total of six under building parking um, locations, and then four um, residential units um, at um, at grade. The upper um, two levels, second and third floor are identical. You can see here's a two-bedroom unit that's above uh, parking, and then there's these two um, one-bedroom units that are above parking as well. The uh, floor plans uh, or the, the exterior building and the roof have uh, been modified from our initial submission to uh, um, respond to um, comments from planning staff. Um, we've uh, modified the building to uh, to have um, predominantly hip roofs with uh, gable ends with um, decorative um, trim work, uh, which is indicative of the uh, the um, um, carriage house type vernacular of, of the building. So the top elevation, the west elevation is the one that faces the street. It's certainly uh, far back from the, from the Flax Hill street line, but this is the um, elevation that faces the street. This is the perpendicular elevation with the um, main entrance into the building in this lower right-hand corner.
Mr. Hopper, can you show us where the additional um, workforce unit is located and what size, what size it is?
Yep. The workforce unit is highlighted right here. It's a one-bedroom unit. Um, and it's uh, the same as um, uh, as all the others and um, I've got, I've got total gross square footage. I'm sorry, uh, let me, let me um, I think it's six hundred ninety square feet.
Thank you.
Here's the uh, um, other elevations and building cross-sections, so you can see how parking occurs uh, underneath the building. The l- lower elevation, the south elevation, this is the elevation that uh, faces the um, faces the condominium complex. And again, it's partially um, um, buried into the slope of the site. You can see slopes on either side. So you'll, you've got great access for parking on the uphill side, and then we dr- we drop down and get the higher stories facing the condominiums. Again, similar um, building materials and coloration to match the um, uh, match the uh, uh, mansion building. We see these two structures as being uh, as being compatible. We uh, mixture of uh, siding here, where at the lower um, story is um, clavoured siding and then the upper um, upper two floors um, are shingle siding. So we've got a differentiation of siding, kind of creating a base for this building, and then horizontal trims as well as some of these decorative trims that I spoke about, which are indicative to the um, to the carriage house typology. And finally, what we have here is a photometrics drawing. I understand that it's obviously hard to see, but i- in pond um, submission to um, to staff, and what I'd like to point out is, is that um, at the, at the property lines, we're at um, zero foot candles. Um, the uh, predominant site lighting is um, under the uh, overhangs of the parking areas, and then there, there's building mounted uh, site lights that point to the centers, center of this, of the site, illuminating the center parking area, but then with cutoff fixture um, and photometrics that we get uh, a z- zero bleed off of, of foot candles at the property line. Um, and that's uh, it for my presentation, and I would be happy to entertain any questions uh, before turning back over to uh, to Emma.
Yep, Mr. Hoopards have a couple of questions. Thank you for the invitation. Um, so the building that you're tearing down, I'm pretty sure that planning and zoning approved the tearing down of that building when you came with the previous application, but just curious why or how old that building is and why didn't you try to preserve it instead of making the, a totally new structure?
Yep. Um, the uh, the, the building is, is uh, uh, not in very good shape. So when we, when we looked at on how we would try to um, add on, um, add on to that, that existing structure, um, we found that we were having some very um, structural difficulties. We also found that um, by trying to add on and provide um, adequate circulation from the ground to upper floors, is that the, the layout wasn't indicative to a very efficient, um, a very efficient layout. I don't know off the top of my head how old that building is, but I do know that we did some research and we found that it was not on the local historic registry. Um, so hopefully that satisfies your uh, your uh, questions.
Okay, thank you. And well, one more, more about the, the building looks, you know, quite spacious or large, but I think you said there are only six parking spaces under the building and, and the Flax Hill condominiums at two oh eight, the property slopes down. So is some of the parking over those units that are somewhat below grade or down the slope? Why didn't you just dig, like dig out underneath rather than using the side of the hill for some units rather than having them at grade?
Yeah, what we see here is that we're, we're at the prominent elevation of the center part of the site and the, you know, oh, oh, there's a kind of a fault line running horizontally underneath, I would say, the court, the main corridor of the building that drops off to the um, to the uh, uh, adjacent site. So it um, seemed the m- most efficient way to uh, um, provide parking. But we also are expanding the, the lot in, in this area and reconfiguring the lot here to be able to, to maintain and in, and, and increase parking. The building really isn't wide enough for kind of a, a typical double or uh, double-loaded corridor parking arrangement. Um, building is uh, is um, predominantly a s- uh, single, we can kind of see here, a single-sided corridor, and then we get single-sided on the first floor, and then we go to, excuse me, a double-loaded corridor um, at the, at the upper levels. So the the building that's predominantly in this um, box, really wasn't wide enough to accommodate a parking stall in ninety degrees and a travel lane. So we just could not get the building, any under building parking at this lower level um, to, to meet the um, unit number that we, we were looking for as well as the um, parking number that we were looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions for Mr. Hopper? Hearing none, I'll turn it over to Brian Dempsey on our traffic.
Good thing, Brian Dempsey. I'm a licensed professional engineer from the firm DTS Providence Design Engineering. Uh, we did the traffic generation study that the TMP requested. Uh, I'm gonna share my screen. So in that, the site with, currently exists of thirty-five units. It's, was previously approved for forty-six units. And with this final project, it's proposed to be fifty-four units. Um, so it's, it's eight more units than what was um, previously approved. And so what we show on the bottom here, it's the difference of going for the additional eight units would result in three additional vehicle trips during the peak AM hour and three in, in the peak PM hour above it was previously approved. Um, when you go back to comparing to this existing, so including the other trips that, units that were approved, would be seven additional trips in the AM and also seven in the PM. Um, PMP has reviewed our study. They agreed with our findings. Those limited amount of trips will not have any impact on the adjacent roadways um, or any impact on levels of service. Um, there's also adjacent to the site, um, the Wheels Bus Route eleven, and then uh, the nine route is also close to the site as well as um, the train stations within easy walking distance. So that'll further keep the amount of traffic lower um, from the site. Um, so just to keep it brief, um, so as the TMP agree with our findings, we, that we're not gonna have a traffic impact um, from this expansion. And any questions?
Yeah, quick clarifying question. Is it fifty-three units or fifty-four units?
It's fifty-three units. I'll jump in on that.
My study was done back in October. It may have changed. So then it's let, there would be less trips. And then I'll go back to Emma with anything else?
If no further questions, I'll just close briefly. So as you all know, section four point three point twenty of the Norwalk zoning regulations allows you all to increase or reduce a minimum or maximum lot standard and/or a bulk or height standard by up to thirty percent from the originating standard in connection with the preservation of a historic structure. We're only asking for the one accommodation that I mentioned related to density, and we think that what we're providing in return is more than a fair trade. We meet all of the regulatory requirements for you to grant this request. The mansion contributes positively to the community and it possesses a degree of historic significance as evidenced by its age, architectural uniqueness, and its cultural value. As I mentioned previously, the mansion was constructed around eighteen ninety, and it's listed on the current Norwalk Historic Resources Inventory. If preserved, the mansion will represent a cultural benefit to the community, and based upon the age of the mansion, its architectural uniqueness and its cultural value, as well as its history, preservation of the mansion offers a substantial benefit to both the community and to the Flax Hill neighborhood, and it will continue to add to the rich fabric of the city of Norwalk. Any special permit granted by the commission will only remain effective as long as the mansion is preserved and maintained. Now, I would refer you to our narrative for detailed information on our compliance with the P O C D and the special permit criteria. I will note that we comply with both, and this modification is fairly similar to the existing special permit approval on the property, which you already found to be compliant with both the P O C D and the special permit criteria. If you would like me to discuss the P O C D and special permit criteria in further detail, I'm happy to go through it. Not hearing that request, in conclusion, for the reasons I've mentioned, we believe the application complies fully with Norwalk zoning regulations, including all the historic preservation and special permit criteria, and we respectfully request that the commission grant the special permit modification application. Thank you.
You. We will now move forward to the public participation section of this uh, public hearing. Uh, anybody who wants to participate in the, from the public, you can raise your hand and uh, Brian will tell you how to, how to do that. You can speak for as long as you like, but you can only speak once. So be sure to say everything that you, you know, you need us to know when you do speak. Also, give us your name and your address when you begin to speak. So Brian, can we bring over any?
Sure. Sure. Uh, first we have um, Keith Wilburg.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep.
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Keith Wilberg and uh, I would live at two oh eight Flax Hill Road. Um, I am a professional engineer licensed in Connecticut, also a licensed land surveyor. Andy introduced me earlier. Uh, by way of disclosure, I work in Public Works in Westport. I'm the town engineer here. Uh, if I keep Andy here long enough, he won't have to come to the meeting. I have to go to in a half hour where he's presenting. Um, I'm predominantly in favor of this, and I'm glad to see the one minor issue for drainage has been addressed. No problem. It was a small issue anyway. Uh, just one kind of issue. It's more of a comment than an issue. I'm in favor of this with respect to the new driveway going out to Flax Hill Road. Um, I was surprised to see the uh, photograph from eighteen ninety or whenever it was. The, it looked like it had a, a driveway that literally went from Flax Hill Road down the side where they're proposing a new driveway. Um, I realize they're getting rid of one curb cut, putting another one, and I know curb cuts are a sensitive thing. You want as few of them as possible. But right now, all the traffic from the rear has to go through an easement across two oh eight. And this is not part of this project, but at someday, I would look forward to revising that easement. Um, I know there's some drainage issues, so we'd have to discuss all the issues with that. And that's not part of this uh, application, but with the increase in units, I'm definitely in favor of this driveway, and it sounds like they're working out the location with DPW and, and town nor, or city Norwalk. So again, I'm predominantly in favor of this. I'll answer any questions if need be. But I did, I reviewed the plans in twenty twenty and spoke to Cubase at De Angelis then, and I spoke to Lantac about this. Um, they do a lot of work in Westport, obviously, and I'll go further than that. They do a lot of good work, so uh, they did a good job addressing Mike concerns, and I'm sold on this. It's a good, looks like a good, it's a better plan than it was in two, twenty twenty. So that's what I'll say.
You, Keith. Um, if anyone else would like to speak, you could use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once. And if you're dialing on a phone, you would hit star nine. Seeing nothing further, Ms. Wells.
Thank you so much. Uh, we then turn it back over to the applicant for a rebuttal.
I don't believe we have any rebuttal. We appreciate Mr. Wilberg's comments and we can close the, the public hearing now from the applicant's perspective. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. Well, the public hearing is now closed. Do I hear a motion on this matter?
Oh, Kaylin, uh, can the commissioners ask another question?
Yes, yeah, and yes.
Okay, thank you.
Public hearing over for, for questions. I'm sorry.
Great. I'm not sure who to address it to, but wh- where are the tenants that are living in the building that's getting torn down going in, and are they all moving back?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question, and our plan is obviously not to, you know, displace any current residents. I'll turn it over actually to Ed Gormley if, if he wants to speak to it in more detail.
Yes, the, the building commissioner is currently vacant.
Oh, okay. Thank you. You don't need to go any further.
Are there any further questions? Okay, hearing done, we will close the, the public hearing, and we will move on. Is, do I hear a motion?
I'll move uh, to uh, approve the, the project.
Wonderful. Is there a second?
Richard's waving his hand.
Uh, then Richard, you second? Okay, so we have an approve, a, a motion and a second. Can we bring up the, the proposed?
And so what I'll note is as we were, as the public hearing was being presented to us, there were some modifications that the applicant had made to the plans to address some of the comments and thus the conditions of approval. So um, I highlighted a couple of them. One was uh, to update the plans, the architectural plans that the approval would be based on. The porch that we had requested that they extend along the northern side of the building, they've addressed that. So I'm proposing that we delete that out. Um, the roof line of the new structure, um, they've addressed that. Um, it's a longer shed roof, but they're hip, uh, hip roofs. And then this is Um, and then this is new language based on the driveway being aligned with Taylor Avenue that they presented, which would mean that we could delete uh, three, which previously said that they work with D P W and T M P to, to look into that.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I do. Um, I just want to double check. Um, I think our regulations are that if they do the ten percent of workforce housing at eighty percent S M I, they do an inclusionary zoning fee of ten dollars per one thousand. And I know they, I remember reading that they're doing an inclusionary zoning fee for the remaining point three percent that it goes over. Is that in addition to that ten dollars per one thousand that comes with the eighty percent?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ready for their questions or suggestions for additions? Okay, hearing done. I think we're ready to move forward with a, with a vote. Can you do a roll call, Brian?
Yes.
Steve?
Sure. And although everyone's seated, I think I misspoke earlier when saying people would, we'd have to alternate between Anna and Diana. Um, Darius makes nine, so we, we should be good with everybody seated. Um, so with that, uh, I'll start with Mr. Williams.
Yes, and I arrived at six oh six for the record.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langallis?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yeah.
And it's approved.
All right. Thank you very much.
Hey, Adam.
Yes, sir.
You don't have to come anymore. You're not getting rid of me.
Yeah, he's on the next one too. Uh, the next matter is twenty twenty-five dash thirty-four S P, Norwalk Housing Ventures. Uh, two LLC, chair of Edward Gormley, one Elmcrest Terrace. It's a special permit for historic preservation development to renovate an existing historic structure and construct a new thirteen unit multifamily building. Public hearing report and recommended action. Uh, do you want to proceed?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, yes, and um, and I'll, because, because it's a new hearing, well, I gotta make a bit of a record, but I'm gonna try to go uh, a little quicker through because a lot of the stuff is the same of what you've just uh, heard. And I do want to mention that was Emma's first land use presentation ever. So she, she is trying to get rid of me. Uh, all right. So Adam Blank again for Workforce Partners. Uh, this, this property is about one point oh seven acres, one Elmcrest Terrace. It's also sometimes known as Fifty Connecticut Avenue. It's again, it, just like the last, it's in the C D three zone and it has a historic home called the Victorian uh, on it. I'm gonna share my screen. Uh, so here's the Elmcrest Terrace at Connecticut Avenue. Um, and this is, it was what Toys R Us or Kids R Us, Bob's, I think Bob's is still there with ninety-five uh, right here. So that's, let's give you some context. This is the historic uh, house and there's some other structures on the property we'll talk about in just a minute. Uh, so after my overview, it's the same uh, same team, Andy Sumalides from Lantac, Mark Hopper, the architect, uh, Brian Dempsey from D T S. Uh, Ed Gormley again is the same owner, uh, who can answer uh, questions on this property as well. Uh, Todd Bryant did give you a, a historic evaluation. He's actually not on, I don't believe uh, today, but, but hopefully we can answer any, any historic questions that may come up. Uh, again, you've got the, the green cards for the notice of the filing uh, to the neighbors as well as for the hearing uh, as well as proof that we posted signs uh, at the property. Um, similar to the last one, there was a prior special permit approval granted for this property that was not in fact constructed. Um, the, the prior approval had um, uh, in addition to the, the existing structures, it was going to be a six unit addition to the thirty existing units of housing. Um, the um, after the regs were changed and, and, and in, in large part, the regs were changed and they did increase the density, the allowable density here. So the regs were changed. A workforce looked at ways to modify its plans to see if they could also, and it had been a number of years since they had the approval without building to see if they could make it sort of financially viable. Um, and so they've uh, come back with a, a slightly modified uh, plan. Um, again, it was, it's currently thirty, thirty units. Um, and the plan now is to continue to preserve and rehab the Victorian house, which I'll show you in a second. Um, and replace uh, an, another, eliminate this small little building back here and place a larger building uh, generally in this area with ten units of additional units. So we're gonna, it was supposed to be a thirty unit. Uh, it was gonna be thirty units with the uh, six that had been previously approved. So now it's still thirty, but we're proposing ten for a total of forty. So in, that's I guess a long-winded way of saying we're asking for four more units than you've previously approved. Um, the, uh, as a result of that increase in unit count, because there'll be ten units added to what's currently existing, we are proposing uh, one workforce unit, a one-bedroom uh, unit. There's a workforce housing plan that's been submitted and Mark can identify the, the specific unit if, if that's something you'd like to see during his presentation. Um, again, under the historic preservation reg, the, the two asks that we have on this one are that increase in density um, that matches the, the change, the underlying zone change. So we're asking for a thirty percent um, increase in density and we're asking for about a twenty-three percent reduction in the required parking. We would normally be required to have fifty-two spaces. Uh, we're asking for forty uh, spaces. Um, those are again allowed under that historic preservation reg, which allows a thirty percent um, modification or deviation from the originating standard. Uh, we've got, we've, we've gone to your departments for their sign-offs and approvals, building, fire, health gave sign-offs. This project is actually unlike the other one. It's in a redevelopment area, uh, which requires their uh, sign-off um, a, and uh, review, which was an architectural review. We went through there, that whole process and we did obtain their a sign-off back on May thirteenth. They had five minor conditions, which we had uh, no uh, issues with and no issues with them being part of your uh, approval hopefully tonight. Uh, we did receive comments from uh, D P W, W P C A and T M P. Uh, the D P W and W P C A comments were, were quite minor. And again, we have no objection to implementing them or them being a condition of approval. T M P had um, a handful of comments about the development, uh, which we've provided responses to and we will continue to work with them to work through their um, concerns. I will say that one of their concerns, like you heard on the, well, one of their concerns dealt with um, coordinating um, construction in a orderly fashion to allow for there to be parking on-site uh, and in the neighborhood during uh, construction uh, which will work out with them and with our uh, current residents to make sure that they continue to have a place to park uh, during the period of construction. Uh, they, like the last project, they have concerns over your parking regulations. Um, and um, and I think, I would say generally speaking, want more parking. Um, again, I think your regs allow for exactly what we're uh, asking for. Um, and, and so we, we, we kind of disagree with them on that front. Um, they've, they asked us to uh, stripe uh, uh, our choice of one of a number of local crosswalks. Um, it's really not a trafficked impact created by our development, but it's a uh, modest enough ask that we're not gonna push back on that and we, we've agreed to, to stripe a uh, uh, one crosswalk uh, sort of of their choosing. Um, they asked for a different driveway apron, which uh, on Connecticut Avenue, which we don't have any uh, issue with. Um, and um, and they, the only thing they had is that there'll be an area which you'll see uh, maybe here. Um, they, there'll be, there's an area of um, some empty pavement that they had asked if we could make a landscaping island and, and um, Andy and can deal with it a little bit better than I can during his presentation, but, but we did look at that. Um, and, um, and we don't think we're gonna be able to make that landscaping because it, it, it would impede the flow for any kind of deliveries or fire access or, or the bigger truck vehicles um, for getting in and out of the site. Um, but, but you'll, you'll see a little bit more uh, on that shortly. Um. The, uh, and then finally, part, part of the project, uh, there, there, there's a little dilapidated um, structure uh, back here that is gonna come down as part of the project. Again, this, the historic structure is up front. Um, the T M P had a concern uh, about uh, about whether, whether this structure should be preserved as a historic structure. Um, and I think, um, look, it's their T M P. They are not the historic commission. Um, that's well outside of their sort of purview, but um, but we'll talk about it anyway. The um, the, this cottage is in uh, poor condition. There's issues with a prior tenant doing a fair amount of destruction in the unit. Um, and, and it's not on any historic registry. It's not listed locally, state or nationally. Um, so, and it doesn't have the architectural significance or historic significance as the Victorian. Um, they, um, additionally, we did get a staff memo uh, that uh, did ask um, that made one request to us, which was there's a, on the existing uh, house, and I'll show you. Go backwards for a second. Um, this is the existing home. So you've got one Elmcrest here, actually three Elmcrest. That, that was Ed too, that just did that, rehab that one. So historic preservation and you can see the start of a, of a retaining wall that extends uh, all the way around the, the site here. So we've agreed to like clean it up, the wall itself, put a new cap on it and then put some junipers uh, that will cascade over the wall and sort of soften it up. Uh, but it, it is a functioning retaining wall. We can't just take it down. Um, and um, so that, we, we, we hope that's sort of responsive to the staff comment with respect to sort of sprucing up the, the wall. Um, so um, you heard, you heard a bit about workforce partners from uh, Emma, and I know you had some, some questions about uh, what they do. I, I think it's worth showing um, for this um. So this says A M I, ignore that, that, that's, that, that is in fact, um, state median income. But so your typical workforce unit is eighty percent of this A M I, but it's S M I, which is this column here for your bedroom types. And again, I think, and just so that, because I think Anna asked about it earlier, I think technically we, Ed, Ed and his company tries to lease between sixty percent and a hundred percent of area median income, which are higher numbers than what you, at the top end, they're higher numbers than what you see here, but at this eighty percent number, um, the, you know, in this actual building, one-bedroom units um, are typically just right about two thousand dollars a month. Um, I think, we'll see if it lets me share again. But so like you can see, when we were looking about, talking about Ed's website, the properties they own in Norwalk, you know, a two-bedroom at twenty-one hundred, a one-bedroom at sixteen, two-bedroom at twenty-three, this is, this our property.
The lowest studio is fifteen ninety-five right now.
Yeah, so, so um, I'm not, we're not saying or representing or promising that they are official workforce units or that they're guaranteed to forever stay that way, but it's a whole lot of properties and the, the rents do um, fairly well match up with the eighty percent um, S M I numbers. Uh, so that is the kind of unit that, that, that Ed uh, develops and leases. Um, and again, after this improvement, we, we expect that these will similar, be similarly uh, priced and, and many of the units at this site aren't going to be changed in this development because they've already been uh, uh, fixed up. So um.
Adam, could I ask one more question about that?
Yeah.
So, um, saying that the rents are sort of equivalent to the sixty to one hundred percent, and I appreciate you showing that. The plan, I feel like it said that they're targeted to people whose incomes are between the sixty and one hundred percent. Are you actually doing that or are you telling everybody that they need to make three times whatever the rent is?
Um, so in terms of targeting, we have to be fairly sensitive to fair housing. So anybody who shows up and can qualify for a unit can get a unit.
Okay.
So, so that's the rule of the land. The way we get at affordability is to go find buildings like this that cost less than building a brand-new luxury building from the ground up. A fundamental problem of providing affordable housing is it's very expensive to build. And so the way we have tried to solve that problem is refurbishing existing units. Um, so we don't have, um, we don't put artificial rent caps in it. Our, our lenders would never let us do that uh, beyond a, a small percentage that your regulations require. Uh, but that's how we're able to serve that, uh, that median income family.
Okay, thank you.
It's, it's definitely a delicate balancing act. I will give you that.
Hey, do you have a question or am I going on?
Retaining walls. Is this a good time to ask about it or you, should we hit it later on?
Uh, you can, you can ask now and we can try to address.
Have there been others ideas to sort of, I guess, beautify? Because I know you can't, obviously you can't take it down, like facing it with stone or something like that. Has that been considered and thought about?
We, we've, we've tried a number of different things with the wall, uh, commissioner, and what we keep coming back to is, and it sounds like you've probably been out to the site. It is a big wall. It is probably a hundred thousand dollars, if not more. It's a big wall. And so what we're trying to do is be as efficient as we can be. And so the, the brick facing just, it's just very expensive, e- even the brick facing. And so what we tried to do with our landscape architect, who's very good and has done lots of things around Fairfield County, uh, is we said, hey, we, we'd like you to be creative with something that looks a little bit more homey than a, a big brick wall. Add some color to it. And, and this is, this is what he came up with. Um, we did have another version where we painted a mural on it, which is kind of nice in the short term. I will tell you from having a mural on a building in another town, they take a lot of maintenance and if you're not on top of them, they can start to deteriorate and it looks worse than before. And so what, what we really like about the greenery is it's gonna take care of itself a bit, right? It's gonna grow into a nice natural look to cover what's all, what's, what is otherwise just a big concrete wall.
Um, Mr. Gormley, sorry, Gormley. Um, did the city say anything to you about the driveway and Elmcrest Terrace? Because to me, you don't even have time to look at that wall if you're either trying to turn off Connecticut Avenue onto Elmcrest or go the other way because it's a horrible merge. Um, and I think the front of your building actually looks pretty good most of the time, but did they say anything to you about that, with the driveway, with the additional units?
Um, thank you for recognizing the improvements we made to the facade. I appreciate that. Um, I don't recall any particular comments around the egress uh, at all.
No concerns were raised.
Yeah.
Okay. And then can you tell me of those two buildings that are on the street by the wall? How many units are in each of those buildings?
That's uh, the combined, what we, we call it the barracks. There's sixteen units total, so it's roughly eight and eight between those two sections.
Okay, and then the rest? So twenty in the old house? No, twelve in the old house.
Twelve in the old house. That's right.
Okay, and you're not doing anything to the old house?
That is where the architectural, the historical architectural upgrades are gonna be to the, to the front.
Haven't gotten there yet. Okay.
So we're, we're gonna take down the fire escape and, and beautify.
Right, all right. And did, was there any comment about um, how maybe you would want to share the driveway with the other project over at three Elmcrest just to make it easier to get out now that you're having more?
If, if you have a magic wand there, I would love for you to wave it.
Okay, not sure that I do, but alright.
But no, we, we, we broached that several years ago when, and, and so let me just correct the record. We, we do not own that, Anthony Gagliol from Viking Construction owns that. And we did talk about that when he bought the property, it did not go anywhere unfortunately.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that misstatement. So back up to the, that, again, this was the existing conditions. And then the proposed shown here. The, and I'll just go back and tell you, so this, this property was, the Victorian was constructed in 1880 Queen Anne style, free class subtype, subtype featuring a tower, plaid and window group, columns supporting the porch roof. It's in excellent condition, other than the, the fire escapes, which are proposed to be removed. The interior is actually also in pretty good condition with many original elements. It's been called the Buxton House in the city's historic documents after George Isaac Buxton, a Civil War veteran and local retail oil merchant. And, and this is what, and this is going to be the primary, really the key to the renovation here is simply removing the unsightly, the unsightly fire escapes and, and then decommissioning. There's actually a unit in the basement that's going to be decommissioned. The, I think we said that this, this small little building in the back was the one that's not in great shape. That's going to come down. Again, it's not, we, we originally were going to try to preserve it, but that just doesn't work. The, but we will of course preserve the Victorian, the, the barracks building which you heard will remain. The, we're adding new parking and drive aisles for again, 40 parking spaces to handicap. About one acre, one acre of the site will be landscaped with trees, shrubs, grasses, ground covers. We've got quite a number of drainage improvements Andy's going to talk about and Brian will, will talk about the traffic. But again, there's no, there's no, no traffic impact. I'll, I'll talk just for a few minutes more at the end, but at this point, let me just pass it over to Andy Sumalides.
Good evening, Andy Sumalides again from Land Tech. Just share my screen quickly. Just to orient you again, this is the existing conditions of the site. Elmcrest here that merges onto Connecticut Ave. Site access is off of Connecticut Ave here. It's a one-way in, so you currently come in one way, you loop through the site and you come out a, a right away out onto Woodbury Ave. So that's how you get to the site. And then here, there's some additional parking that currently sits there. What you'll see in the next slide is this is where our proposed building goes and then this whole island and, and little building goes away. The site is 29,600 square feet of impervious surfaces under existing conditions. And similarly, not many drainage improvements, especially not to today's standards. And you'll see a vast improvement in that in our proposal. So here again, this is the new structure that we are proposing tucked in behind the existing historic and the barracks building you heard earlier. I'll zoom in here and, and just talk about this island a little bit. So what we did and the way this, this parking was organized, now you still come in the same way. We added two parallel spaces here where this structure was. And then you're kind of left with like a sea of asphalt kind of in the middle. And then you have these parking spaces which you access on this side. And then you drive in and underneath the building and you access spaces on either end, like, like a typical drive aisle. Some of which are under the building and some of which are outside the limits of the, of the footprint of the building, so some covered. And what we did here was just do a striped island. And the purpose of that, again, you heard earlier, is for emergency vehicles. We have a dumpster situated here, so you know, a dumpster truck vehicle will come in, back out and get out of the site. This allows, you know, being striped, it allows for easier turning movements of those larger vehicles that would come onto the site. So that's why we striped it, we could also do some type of mountable curve. But it'd be hard to, to put a tree here and then making sure the turning movements work throughout the site. So that's why we left it as striped and it, and honestly, it's much easier to maintain when it's striped, easier to plow, all those things. It'd be great if we could get a landscape tree in there, but we, you know, we're, we vote against that. For drainage purposes, again, under proposed conditions, we are at 30,600 square feet. So you heard earlier, 29,600 existing, 30,600 proposed. So a thousand square feet of additional impervious on this 1.1 acre site. So very small increase again in impervious surfaces, but you do see a very robust drainage system here, which captures the roof and the driveway and the parking areas. And the purpose of that is to meet the, the standards of your drainage standards. So it's a, it's a very large system here that's proposed here to meet your, your requirements. So it's a huge increase in all the storm events, you know, the, the 200 to 300 year storm events. There's a huge decrease that you'll see in our drainage report up to like 90% for many of the storm events based on this new improvement. This is our just utility plan again, as I mentioned earlier. There's already existing water and sewer services that service the site. We would tie into those and work with D B W and W P C A on those matters. Your standard erosion incentive control plan, this will probably need a little bit more detail working with Ed and his team on parking management during construction and the sun's construction fencing. So we'll work in more detail once we get a contractor lined up and figuring out how we're building this thing. So that makes sure the tenants have places to park. And then lastly, again, the landscaping plan, we're looking to remove three trees, plant four new ones and add some low lying shrubs, again, kind of framing the architecture of, of the historic structure. So that's all I have to share. I'll turn it over to Mark unless you guys have any questions at this moment.
Mr. Sumalides, since you mentioned trees and you know, if you've been to these meetings before, trees are very important to me. Part of what made Elmcrest Terrace, Elmcrest Terrace years ago, that it did have, probably had elm trees, but those all died. But there, there's a copper beech, a property over, and it looks like a big oak tree in the front of the building. But the rendering that Attorney Blank showed looked like that big tree is going to be gone. And then it looked like a little, what I call fruit trees. And there, I think you said you were removing three big trees in the back. The photo I'm looking at, they look quite significant. And so if, I would really like to make sure that when you replant along the front, that you don't plant little fruit trees, that you plant oak trees, maples, copper beech, you know, significant trees that take time to grow, but that will lend back to that historic character of those properties.
Sure. I think we can accommodate that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Mark? And actually, you know, Andy, you've got to leave? Or can you make?
Yeah, I'm kind of following the other one.
Alright, alright, okay.
I'll, I'll, I'm fine for right now.
Sure, again, for the rec. Okay. Again, for the, for the record, Mark Hopper with Kroski Architects, I'll share my screen, give me a second. Okay. Here's the, here's the rendering as you had seen of the Victorian building. I'm, I think the elimination of the, of the large tree at the front was a little bit of artistic license as well to be able to show the, the, the front elevation of this building, particularly when we were in, went in front of historic review so that they could get a full view and effect of the improvements to the building by removing the, the fire escapes. So just quickly, this is, we showed these drawings in, in our initial permit, special permit review. The thing that I really would like to point out is that the areas highlighted in red are the, the extent of the fire escapes that are going to be removed. There still will be some fire escape at the back of the building that will remain in place. But, but predominantly the fire escapes that are at, at the front and front corner of the building will be removed. Certainly to facilitate this to occur as the building will be sprinkled. So there is a cost of the project to be able to, to remove these, to remove these fire escapes. Again, this is just a quick graphic, again, red shows what it looks like currently and what it would look like with, with the fire escapes removed. Getting into the, into the new building, as you can see from the site plan, there's a, you know, fairly sizable triangular shape of area at the interior portion of the site to look for means and opportunities to add density to the site was a, you know, bit of a architectural task. And what we ended up doing was really kind of emulating the, the, what was done at Three Elmcrest. Our firm was involved in that project, I was not personally. But the, to, to maintain the parking count, the only way that we could really approach the, the increase in density was to raise the building up off of grades so that we could still maintain parking below the building. This dashed line is that outline of the second and third floor above, if you call the ground, ground floor, first floor. So you can see there's a, a row of parking that's directly underneath the building. And there, there's a row of parking that, just the access drive is underneath the building, but the parking itself is, is outside in open air. And this is partly to, to maintain the setback requirements. There is a two stairs that come down and, and touch grade. As part of our review with redevelopment, there was a peer review done and there was a couple of comments by the peer review architect. So we made some slight modifications to the, to the application submission to essentially add a door out of each of the stair with a porch over it so that it became more, it created a more identifiable entrance into these stairs for visitors in the general public who are, might be coming to, to visit a resident here. We're still going to maintain the, the existing doors out of the stairs underneath the building so that anybody who's parking underneath the building can, can leave the stair and still stay undercover. And we'll show that to you in, into building elevation. Second and third floor are fairly identical, the units stacked with the exception of, because of our numbers, we have, I think, seven, seven units per floor. At the second level, we have a space for a community space lounge as well as some mechanical space incorporated in the building. So there's six units at this floor and seven units on the floor above. The highlighted unit in blue is the, is the workforce housing unit. It's a one bedroom and it's similar in, in size to the other, to the other one, one bedroom units. This is a double loaded corridor, again, that is accessed by two stairs. And then this is the third level, again, it shows at the second floor, the, the, the seventh unit. These are the exterior elevations, this is the elevation that's internal to the site. You can see that this is the area where we're parking below. The east and west elevations are the short side elevations. And you can see this is the change that we made to the submission drawings to, to add an additional porch and an additional door so that there was an identifiable entrance. The architecture of this building, the details that you see in the gable ends are reminiscent of the details of the existing cottage building. Again, like 204 Flax Hill, we saw the, this, this new building and the Victorian to, as, as two compatible structures. You know, being a historic architect, we wanted the, the architecture of the new addition to, again, be, be compatible to the, to the Victorian, but also be reminiscent of the, of the cottage that's, that's on site. The north elevation that you see in the lower right-hand corner, this is the elevation that faces the Three Elmcrest project. This is a rendering that shows the new building in relation to the Victorian and then with the, with the Three Elmcrest project in, in, in the background. Siding and roofing materials, these are, this is the same palette that we used in the initial special permit application. So we're, again, similar to 204 Flax Hill, we're going with a, with a board and batten type siding system at the base of the building to give it the, give it the base at that parking level. And then the shingle siding up above with large brackets and trim work, again, emulating the, the the existing cottage building, a two-color paint scheme, a gray and, and a white. The white is the, the trim colors as well as the board and batten. And then the lighter gray is the, is the shingles and the, at the second and third floor. And again, similar to 204, we've got a photometrics plan. Again, the primary lighting is, is underneath the building that lights the, the parking area and travel, the travel portion, travel lanes. And we've got building mounted light fixtures pointing to the interior of the site. Again, the photometric show that we've got zero foot candles at the, at the property line. And at this point, I'll turn it over to any questions.
Perfect, I've got a question for you on the lighting specifically. I had seen in the peer review architects' report, they were asking about lowering the, the light fixtures that were mounted on the building. Was that something that you guys were able to address?
We, we weren't able to accommodate that when we, when we looked at lowering the, the light fixtures. Then the, the amount of illumination of the center area dropped. And again, we were trying to eliminate the location of, of any pole fixtures in the circulation zones with the different types of traffic and service, service vehicles and fire equipment and just have lighting mounted on the building. So we were not able to accommodate the lowering of it to be able to achieve the proper illumination of that parking and travel zones.
Okay, do you anticipate any issues with the, the light reflecting into the units that are underneath that lighting?
We do not.
If there's no other questions from Mark, Brian?
Alright, for the record again, Brian Dempsey, excuse me, I'm a licensed professional engineer from DTS Providence Design Engineering. Again, we met with T, T M P to discuss what they were looking for from a traffic standpoint. They asked for a traffic generation study. They asked for a traffic generation study which we prepared. Briefly share my screen. Again, as Adam said in the beginning, the thirty existing units, it was previously approved for six more. And to bring it up to thirty six and then it's the project would be additional four units above the previous six. That was previously proposed. Excuse me. So this additional four units would only generate another two units in the. Two trips in the peak AM hour, two trips in the peak PM hour. So it will not be a significant amount of traffic. We did conduct past the analysis of nearby intersections. At the request of TMP, it showed that there is no traffic impact, no change in level of service. So they agreed with our findings and I'll get it back to Adam.
Thanks, Brian. So just in sort of conclusion, one, the. You know, the application, we're only asking for the two modifications from the reg for your your standard regs under the historic preservation for the density and parking. The we've given you the narrative with our application materials on compliance with the special permit criteria and P O C D. And I would just say that, you know, with this project, the although the. It's not an enormous amount of work being done on the historic structure. It's going to look a whole lot better with the removal of the fire escapes and and I don't want it to be lost on you that the Mark did mention it, but the. Actually, now you've got to install fire suppression in the units, which is quite costly. And you you get the building guaranteed to be preserved by virtue of the special permit that would, you know, assuming that it's granted. You get this preserved, which it's not, it's not like heads jumping to tear it down, but there's no, there's no legal impediment to. To destroying the building or destroying its architecture without the special permit that we seek tonight. And obviously, it will add some much needed lowercase, as Mr. Milligan likes to say. Affordable lowercase a affordable units into the marketplace and and it will add some money into this neighborhood, which which really could use it. So I think with that with that, we'll we'll close absent questions from the commission.
Does does anybody have any questions at this time? Before we move to public participation? Seeing none, we will move to the public participation portion. The public is invited to express their opinion, to speak. You can speak as long as you want, but you only get to speak once. So say everything that you feel you need to say and the first time, the only time you get to speak. Give us your name and address before you're beginning your presentation. Brian, can you tell them how to raise their hand and and get brought over to participate?
Sure. So for anyone from the public, if you'd like to speak regarding this application, you can use the raise your hand tool. At the bottom of your screen, you would click that once, and if you're dialing on a phone, you hit star nine. Seeing none, Ms. Wells?
Thank you very much. Well, attorney blank, you can, you now have a time for rebuttal.
Yeah, I think we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions before I close the public hearing? Okay, we will close the public hearing. Do I hear a motion on this matter? Or I would like to hear a motion on this matter. Is that, and there is a second, shape of second? Okay, Brian, can you bring up the proposed resolution? I for one am not comfortable with the junipers over the cement retaining wall as a way to make it. Less tightly. I would really like to see a requirement here that a. Facing be explored. With staff and then a facing to the. To the retaining wall. Be approved by staff before zoning permit is issued. Does anybody have any objection to that on the commission?
I would be in support of that. I don't know if it needs to be like rock cladding necessarily, but even like a stucco or something some textured. To help with the wall a little bit. I I'd be okay with it being in conjunction with the the junipers, but I agree with you that something needs to. Happen with that wall. Yeah, go ahead, Darius.
Can also wilt and dry up in a bad summer, you know, that's not a permanent solution. I'm sorry, Darius.
Oh, I was just going to say I agree and yeah, I would prefer some sort of a stone veneer if possible.
Yeah, and there are many different kinds of stones veneers. It doesn't have to be a whole brick. I assume.
I'm going to take the more natural approach. Juniper is drought tolerant. If they could put a drip hose in there or something. It's cooler, it's environmentally friendly. They could plant some flowers along it, create a pollinator pathway. There's a lot of things that they could do that would be. That would soften that wall that are more natural and naturally occurring. So with all due respect, I would.
Well, they'd have, they'll be working with staff and and come up with a solution that is that's acceptable to staff. That's what I'm suggesting here. Is that okay with you, Tammy?
I'm glad that they will be working with staff, but I would advocate that a natural solution to mitigate the look of that wall. Would be preferable or more environmentally friendly and probably more cost effective for the applicant, but that's not necessarily our concern. But I think maybe a combination of the two, but I wouldn't eliminate the fact that they want to do something with plant material. I think that's a really nice touch. We could use more plant material in many places in our city.
Hey, Brian, do you have some language you can put in here? Hey, that looks good to me.
And along those lines, Tammy, do you want to add what you were talking about with the tree selection? I don't know, maybe Brian, this is already further down here as a condition, but.
I think that's a good idea, Nick. Thank you.
I think that fit well at number two, yeah.
Say that again.
Well, do we add something about not just small fruit type trees, but significant street trees? Oak, maple. Sorry, what's the other one? I don't think, sadly, elm trees don't exist anymore, but beech trees. They might be going away too. There's some kind of disease on them these days or bacteria, but anyway.
I would I would leave the species out and we can work with the city arborist to come up with something that makes sense.
Okay, well, how would you say it, Steve? Because there are, I mean, if they leave that big oak that's in the front, that's awesome. But a lot of times developers just put these little fruit trees that grow about eight feet tall. I'm talking significant trees to bring back the luster of Elm Crest Terrace. It'll take twenty years, but.
Appropriately sized or?
Appropriately sized, yes. Twenty feet plus, seventy eight trees. I mean, they have to grow into it, but.
Then.
We only go.
Be a consideration.
Sorry, Darius, isn't here, he said.
Drainage also has to be a consideration because trees also have vast root systems. So, you know. I definitely err on the side of deferring to our arborists.
Very good.
Especially on such a slope site, yeah.
Trees drink up the water, which is good. So but you wouldn't put them next to the drainage system, which is probably in the driveway.
Steve, I wonder if it would make, if it would make sense instead of. Coming to an agreement on the wall prior to the issuing of a zoning permit, maybe prior to issuing of a CO. I mean, it it sounds to me like that's going to take a while. I thought the the cleaning of the wall and the and the overhanging plants was a good idea myself, but.
Yeah, I don't have a problem if you change the COs. It's fine. They can get their permit.
Good idea, Richard.
Do we have a condition relating to the striping of a sidewalk?
We might just point back to the TMP memo.
I'm glad they're willing to contribute to the local area.
Where it's going to go because you wouldn't want to cross Connecticut Avenue right there.
Yeah, I I trust TMP to pick a where an appropriate location for a crosswalk. Yeah, I think, is it Woodward is next door? That might be.
Yeah, the next block.
Woodbury, Woodbury, yeah, would be a better location for that if it's not striped.
Is everybody comfortable with these conditions as they're currently drafted? Are we ready to take a vote?
Yeah, I'm comfortable with this. Do you need another motion as as amended?
Yes, yes, we do need another motion as amended. Who made the original motion? Did you make the? And I did, and I, you're comfortable with this? Will you remake your motion?
I will motion to approve the proposal as amended.
Right, and then shape.
Resolution, yeah.
Yes.
Okay, now I think we're ready to take a vote.
All right, we'll do reverse order. Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Bashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Ms. Wells?
Yes.
I think that is approved as well.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now we will move on.
Thank you.
These matters out of reordering the agenda, we will now take the refer two referrals to the city of Newark. Twenty twenty five dash forty two, eight dash twenty four referral, city of Newark, one cap pasture beach. One cap pasture beach road proposed expansion of public parking report recommended action. Who's here representing the city?
I see that somebody from GPW is the.
Wilburn, I see, I think Christine is here as well.
Yeah, I think they're stuck in the attendees list for a second.
Yeah, bring Christine over. I don't know if I see Jim.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Throw into the fire, Wilburn.
No, no worry. I believe Jim Meehan was also presenting this item. See, see on.
I don't, I don't see Jim on.
Not a problem. I'm familiar with the with the project, so I could speak on it. I'm going to start by sharing my screen first. Okay. Sorry for the wait. I'm just pulling up the right file here. I'm going to share my screen now. Okay, here we go. Okay, you should be able to see my screen now with the parking layout, parking lot layout for. What we what we've been calling the dog park. So DPW has been working with Parks and Recreation with the goal to extend the parking lot. At the edge of the dog park where where visitors tend to park there and and visit the park. As such, we are required to also adhere to the city's drainage requirements. So as part of this extension of a parking lot, we've also included the proposed installation of. Some cold tech systems that will capture the projected runoff. From the increase in stormwater as a result of the expanded asphalt parking lot. Because this is in the CAM zone, we are submitting a CAM application with the planning and zoning department. And and are presenting this to the commission for your review and recommended action. Other than that, I'm happy to discuss or answer any questions that the commission may have.
Have any questions?
I do. Hi, Mr. Jaron. A couple of questions. One, I know the property is called Cap pasture beach, but why isn't it? One Canfield Avenue for the application?
I I believe although the parking lot is is located on Canfield Avenue, we submitted the application based on the. Address that's with the associated lot number.
Okay, because one, anyway, cap like five cap pasture beach starts way up by the intersection with Marvin Street. But anyway, just want to make sure we vote on the right address. And then, did you guys consider? Just doing pervious pavers rather than making a whole new parking lot because. I think that area is used a lot more in the summertime than it is in the winter.
We did take into consideration some alternative methods. Aside from the more traditional cold tech system installation, unfortunately, we have a very strict budget that we can work with. And if we utilize that budget for for drainage, too much drainage, then we don't have enough to. or drainage, too much drainage, then we don't have enough to expand the parking lot to uh to justify the the number of spaces. So this is the most cost effective method that can still meet on the city's strange requirement.
If you did pervious pavers, would you need all the cultech drain? Because it's a different surface. I don't mean pervious asphalt, I mean pervious pavers.
Theoretically, we would not need the cold tech system, um but it is a more expensive product per square foot, which would put us over the budget if we wanted to keep the uh proposed dimensions.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions? Hearing no further questions, uh do I hear a motion? I don't hear one, could I hear, could somebody make a motion?
This is shaping all move to approve.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, shall we do a roll call? Brian or Steve?
Sure.
We'll start with Mister Williams.
Yes.
Miss Tabashnik?
Yes.
Miss Lankowski?
Yes.
Miss Langgallis?
No.
Miss Wells?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, Galen, I just skipped you, sorry. Miss Mister Bryce?
Yes.
Mister Rowena?
Yes.
Mister Schulman?
Yes.
And Mister Cantor?
Nick?
We can't hear you.
Can't hear you, Nick.
Thumbs up?
Thumbs down. Alright, so that motion carries.
Thank you. Uh our next matter is uh twenty twenty five dash forty four dash eight dash twenty four referral, Sean's lawns, two Mueller Avenue, sanitary sewer extension, that's a report and a recommended action. Is anybody here to present on that?
Yes, Wolver again, um permanent engineer with D P W. So um I'm gonna start by sharing my screen again. I should be able to see the site plan for two Mueller Avenue. Now, the D P W has been coordinating with the property owner for two Mueller Avenue, Sean's lawns to facilitate a connection to the city's sanitary sewer system in accordance with the conservation requirement. Uh because there is no existing sanitary sewer main within ten feet of the property boundaries, uh the owner is required to extend the sewer main in accordance with D P W and W P C A sanitary sewer extension policy, which was adopted in July of twenty twenty one. Um in compliance with this policy, a public hearing on the proposed sewer main extension was held by the W P C A board, and the extension was approved last month. Uh as the next steps in the process, we are now presenting the proposal for the sewer extension to the Planning and Zoning Commission for Report and Recommended Action. Um the scope of the work um I'll highlight with my cursor. The existing sewer main uh currently exists on Pulaski Street, which ends right around where my cursor is. Uh let me zoom in a little bit so I can get a clear review. So as part of this proposal, uh the owner is looking to extend the sanitary sewer down this way and then towards Mueller Avenue and install two sanitary sewer manhole structures. And then from their property, they will be bringing in the sanitary sewer lateral and connecting to the new main, which they're extending. Um the owner will be responsible for the construction of the sewer main, the um testing to make sure that it meets city standards. Uh D P W staff will be uh inspecting the installation as the work continues. And when it's all set and complete, the owner will be donating this uh sewer main to the city for the city to own and maintain uh moving forward. Um again, I'm happy to discuss and answer any questions that the commission may have regarding this work.
Um Mister Jaron, I my question may not be for you, um it may be for Amelia. If this action is taken, um does it resolve um the issue with Sean uh Sean's lawns?
So I I spoke with Alexis.
Yes.
Regarding the aquifer protection and and getting their um permit with that, she said this is a step as part of them getting their aquifer, so this is a required step of them being issued their aquifer approval.
Well, I They have not been in compliance for some time, I think actually for some years. Um this is, this is the sort of thing we talked about last week. I mean, I have a problem with, fir- first of all, with trusting them, given their their past history on the one, on the one side, on the other side. Um you know, th- th- this is something which may benefit the aquifer. Uh so I'm sort of torn. I'm not in favor of doing things that uh help uh companies um that uh um are are not in compliance and that haven't worked with the city uh to bring themselves into compliance. So I my 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 feelings about uh about this are uh quite mixed. I I'm sorry Alexis isn't here to discuss this with us. Yeah, Mister Schulman, I think, and and I understand your sentiment completely. I think in this instance, it this is, it's a little bit of a chicken and egg scenario, if if we don't approve this, it doesn't allow them to become into compliance. So I think in considering what the the nature of this, I would agree with you wholeheartedly if they were actually building another building, or this was some other improvement on the site, but this is something working in conjunction with the city that ultimately gets them into compliance with their A P A requirements. But I presume that uh this is necessary, but not sufficient to bring them into compliance. You know, this doesn't take care of everything, but it it's a it's a necessary step in that process. Alright, thank you.
Do they then shut down the septic that they have? And is that part of this? Is that required as well?
That I'm not positive. I don't know if Wilbur knows anything about that particular piece of it.
I believe the goal is to eliminate the septic, so this would be, uh so yes, the the they would eliminate and abandon the existing septic once this is installed, constructed and accepted.
So can we write that into our approval that that will then be done by the applicant?
Yeah, well, for the purposes of this instant eight twenty four, we can add that as a as a request. It's not not an actual application in in front of you in terms of uh placing conditions or not placing conditions on things. Uh I I think that would be definitely a requirement as part of their um A P A approval.
Are there any time fr- Are there any timeframes on uh when this is supposed to happen, when they're supposed to start, when they're supposed to finish?
Um I'm not aware, go ahead, Wilbur, sorry.
Uh I'm speaking with the owner, um he's looking to get started uh soon as possible. Um he's the, we've been delaying the issuance of the permit, obviously, until uh it gets approved, but once it gets approved, he'll be looking to start um right away. And the total length of this sewer main is about eighty feet, which um it shouldn't take too long for them to construct, uh should there be no, no conflicts or issues. Um I don't wanna speak for the uh owner, but I would estimate between two to four weeks to to complete the work.
Thank you.
Further comments or questions?
I'm gonna make a comment. I'm I'm absolutely with Lou on this one, except I I feel like the sewer is the greater good, um so I'm I'm gonna vote in favor of it.
Yeah, this was one where we we, when the application came in, um we talked to Alexis and said, you know, we know that the this is gonna come up, that they're they're not in compliance and the commission. One, can we even put it on the agenda? And two, if if the commission would act favorably upon it and um she's she strongly suggested that that this is a necessary step, so that's why we we.
It might ha- be or have been helpful too, if there was some narrative that went along with this, cuz the way I was seeing it, we only got all of these technical drawings from Land Tech. There was nothing else about the application in the agenda.
Great.
My feeling is eliminating a septic system for three giant buildings on the top of the aquifer is a good thing.
I agree.
I concur as well.
Yep, absolutely. Okay, are we ready to move forward? Is do I have, is there a motion?
To approve.
I'll second.
Okay, let's do a roll call then.
See here. Mister Cantor?
Yes.
Mister Schulman?
Uh very reluctantly, uh yes.
Mister Rowena?
Yes.
Mister Bright?
Yes.
Miss Langgallis?
Yes.
Miss Lankowski?
Yes.
Mister Bashnik? Mister Williams?
Yes.
And Miss Wells?
Yes.
Right, that is approved.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thanks, Wilbur. Thank you, Christine.
Okay, then we will go back to the third public hearing that's on our agenda. This is twenty twenty five dash twenty nine S P. M O C A Westport Holdings LLC nineteen Newtown Turnpike. Uh that's a modification to an existing special permit to allow for the manufact- to allow for manufacturing use.
That's not true.
Public hearing report and recommended action. Is attorney blank representing?
Yes. Okay. Um good evening again, uh Adam Blank uh for the applicant, uh Moca Westport Holdings. Uh let me share my screen. Um so they're the owner of about five point eight acres of land at nineteen Newtown Turnpike. It's on the Westport uh line. Uh but the building is uh in Norwalk. Um so um it it is, as as was said, this is a modification to an existing special permit. Um which is on top of a existing, a pre-existing, non-conforming sort of commercial use in what is otherwise a residential uh neighborhood. Um so back in two thousand and nineteen, this commission gave uh a Moca Museum of Contemporary Arts. Back then, it was known as the Westport Art Center. Uh a special permit to use a portion of this building, the front portion uh as a public museum. Um and the the building as a whole sort of is and remains grandfathered as a a pre-existing uh non-conforming for commercial use. Um but we've filed this amendment to clearly allow a BioWave, which is a a tenant that's gonna come in uh on this back corner uh of the property and occupy about a third uh of the site. Um the with me uh from my firm is uh Julie Ludwig, uh an attorney that's been helping on this project. Um I'm gonna give you an overview, cover a couple of housekeeping items, and then turn it over to the rest of the team uh on this project, uh Ryan De Silva and Greg Biancardi are the architects from D B Architecture. Uh Brian Dempsey, who you've heard from earlier tonight, is the uh traffic engineer. Um I I I think the, I don't think our our civil engineer is able to get uh on to, well, between the architects and myself, will try to cover um the 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 very modest amount that relates to civil. Uh if he's able to join, then he'll be able to answer questions if they uh come up. That was Steve Trinkus. Um we also have with us uh Brad Siff, he's the founder and president of BioWave, that the tenant that's gonna come in here to talk to you a little bit about what their business is and what they'll be doing at the site. Uh we also have uh Tom Hofstadter, who's been coordinating this project on behalf of uh Moca's Board of Directors to answer any questions, as well as uh Bill Felton from uh Moca as well to answer uh questions. Uh so we we received uh D P W sign off uh with just their sort of standard language. No, no project specific conditions are concerned. We received a sign off from the from fire. They asked for a couple of minor clarifications that don't impact their sign off or this uh application or or your your business tonight. Um T M C, uh I'm sorry, T M C, T M P, uh Building Department and W P C A all issued what I'm gonna call clean sign offs without any comments at all. Um the Health Department uh referred it over to the Aspetuck Westport Health District. Um because we're on septic and the septic's actually located in Westport. Uh and we've been working with the Aspetuck uh Health District uh on any uh issues we have to get their sign off, but don't expect uh issues uh with them, but we're we're working with them now. Um we did receive some comments from Westport um planning and zoning and from Westcog. Uh again, cuz it's so close to the Westport line um about giving from from Westport. Um and and we'll talk about the both of those uh comments in just a little bit. Uh we did post a sign uh at the site as required, uh giving neighbors notice as well as provided them with the required notice of filing and of this uh public hearing and have submitted that proof to your staff. Um the um property, it's in the C D one M zone. Uh again, it's a commercial structure and it has a couple of, there's two other smaller uh buildings on site uh that are also part of uh the property. The um the main building was built in nineteen twenty six and is about thirty thousand square feet. With these two smaller buildings are essentially residential buildings uh here. I'll show you. So showing you two things and I'll kind of scroll through a number of photos. So Moca's uh the front of the building uh and Passano uh is, it's called Peter Passano Limited. They're a high-end wallpaper company. Um they they're, it's a current tenant on the back, this third of the building with BioWave, the proposed tenant on this uh third of the building. Um the Moca uh is a nonprofit uh uh art museum gallery. They have exhibitions, offer classes, workshops and events. Um and that's been the case since they've moved to the property. Um BioWave would be taking about seven thousand square feet in this back corner of the building. Um predominantly, as a result of that moving, there'll be some interior renovations. Um but there are some exterior modifications uh proposed, um which which we'll go through and the architects will sort of detail. Um but the 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 one that uh would say probably most important to you and to any in attendance uh relates to um access to this space. Um so under existing conditions, there's this parking area here in drive aisle. And then there's a walkway that comes around the the side and back of the building. Over here, this is proposed, that that it's not, it doesn't look exactly the same, but the parking remains. And then a a new access drive comes back here for deliveries to BioWave with a turning for the for a truck to come, make a delivery and then um and then back into here and pull pull out. So there'll be a new drive aisle around the backside of the building around the Passano uh space. Um and to give you some sense of what we're talking about here. Um this is the front of the building um where Moca is. Uh this is if you were at that front of the building he- here, looking back out towards Newtown Turnpike. This is the 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 entrance drive to the property. Again, as you come from the entrance in towards the stones, you know, the main, the Moca portion of the building, you see this, this is where the wallpaper company is, Passano. And here's a close up of that. This is the existing parking area with the asphalt walking path that goes around the back that would be converted to a drive aisle for deliveries. The what you're looking at here, because there were some letters submitted from neighbors, and I want you to have a real good understanding of how we fit into the neighborhood. So if you were here where this awning is, looking off of our property with your back against the building, that's what this picture shows. And what I, what you should notice is, aside from the, I think that's a six-foot fence, but aside from the fence that runs along the property line here, on this side of the property, we're well above the grade of the house below. And it's entirely sort of shielded, with the exception of just a couple of these two upper windows maybe have a little bit of a view towards something, but it's pretty shielded. Then this, this image here is, as you look to the back of the site, that's off the back of the site. This runs along the back of the site. And this would be essentially where the garage bay is proposed for deliveries. And as you, again, as you can see, this is, there's a healthy distance here with a whole lot of pretty mature trees and vegetation all behind us. And then the sort of exterior work ends here, and the back, the corners back here, there's no more drive aisle that would be, it ends right around here, which you'll see shortly. But if you were to see, this is the space that BioWave will take. And we've now, we've come around the back of the corner, and we're walking back towards the front end. BioWave would be in this space here. No drive aisle or anything proposed here, and you can see this is well below, there's actually a huge dip, so we're pretty low here, and the neighboring properties which are further out are again shielded very well from our site. As you move more towards the front, you can see that this is an existing parking area, and you could see what a significant grade change it is down to the building, and how much higher up the ground is here, which really leaves very little to see of our building from off-site back here. Now, that was the building we were just looking at. We've stepped further away. This is the existing, one of the existing residential buildings on the property. And you can see the way for you, you can see there's a fence along the property line there from the neighbor's property. And then you can see as you look back out towards Newtown Turnpike, we're looking with our back towards that residential little building, the fencing along the property line here. You did get a letter from, I mean, there was a few things submitted, but I'll point out one of the neighbors that had the most concerns about screening was over here at 20 Columbine Lane. This was his property here. So you see his property sort of starts where that residential building was and goes towards the front of the Moca. The BioWave was back here with no drive aisle put in here, with just the drive aisle back on this side. So again, his property line starts around here and moves up in this direction. Not back here at all, and not back here at all. So we don't expect that we'll have any impact at all on the BioWave coming in on that neighbor. The as a result of the, the changes to the asphalt changes specifically, that will have a modest increase in impervious area, about 6,000 square feet. Essentially, all of that's gonna be directed to underground detention system of 21 call tech units to provide zero increase in the peak rate of runoff. I'll show you. This was an older landscaping plan that remains essentially as-is. But of the mature trees on site, this was back from when Moca initially went in. Again, you can see it's pretty heavily landscaped and because of the topography changes, there's not much visibility to the site or pretty well screened. And Moca put up fencing around most of the property. There will also be sufficient parking at the site. The BioWave expects to typically use less than about 20 spaces. Per Norwalk's regulations, between Moca's use, the wallpaper company and BioWave's use, 59 total spaces are required. The property's got a bit over 100 spaces, which will remain, so there's not, there's no parking issue. And again, because there was comments from neighbors, yes, this property does sit in what is today a residential zone, and admittedly, most of the neighborhood has always been residential. But this site has long predated almost all of those residential structures. It has always been an industrial and commercial site. And the main building on that site is not remotely conducive to any kind of a residential use. It's got that large stone structure with a warehouse-like portion with a flat roof for the whole back half of the building. This building was leased, it got sort of attention when it was leased and owned by Martha Stewart Living and Omni Media back in the late 1990s into the early 2000s, where it served as Martha Stewart's filming studio. Prior to that, it was a warehouse for storage and light manufacturing purposes, and it even had the production of munitions and aircraft parts. Based on the research we've been able to kind of cobble together, around 1920, it was built by Walter Lisberger, an entrepreneur who used this property for a whole bunch of different endeavors. It housed Liberty Chemical Laboratory as well in the 1920s, trying to make rubber sap, using rubber sap to make tires. After that, it housed Microstat Company, which reduced paperwork to microfilm. For the next sort of three decades up until the mid-1960s, it was home to Boots Aircraft Company that made specialty parts for military aircraft that served for a number of years after that as offices, then was occupied by Ward French Construction. And then finally, it went to Martha Stewart Living for the film production. So the, the commercial use of this property predates your zoning regulations, has existed for literally over 100 years. And BioWave, which you're gonna hear about now, BioWave's continued commercial use will actually be a less intense use than much of the property's historical use, more in keeping with the character of the surrounding suburban neighborhood. So BioWave, I'll tell you a little bit about it, and then I'm gonna have Brad Siff from BioWave tell you more, but BioWave is gonna use this as its corporate headquarters. And we're saying that it's a light manufacturing with temporary storage of their materials in addition to offices. And when we say light manufacturing, you know, that can make people nervous. So I want to be clear, and Brad will be clear, that's in the description here as sort of the worst-case interpretation of what they do. I think what you'll hear is that it is the lightest of light manufacturing, if that's what you're gonna, if that's what you're gonna call it. So Brad, if you don't mind, maybe I'll ask you a couple of questions, and you can tell the commission a little bit about BioWave. Can you, can you start off with just sort of what BioWave does and sort of who they do it for and what you plan to do with this location?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I don't know if you want my video on, but it won't, it's, won't let me turn it on. Anyway, thank you, everybody. Good evening. I appreciate your time. I am the founder and president of BioWave. BioWave is a medical device company. It is a excuse me, a smarter pain-blocking technology. It's a way of delivering therapeutic electrical signals through skin directly to pain nerves. The signals block the pain signal locally right at the nerve before it can travel up to your brain. It's a patented technology. We've been a Norwalk-based company for excuse me, about 25 years. We've kind of run out of the space where we're at, and this space is really ideal for us. The New York Giants were my very first customer when I started the company. Today, almost every professional in college excuse me, sports team uses BioWave to help keep athletes in the game. In 2017, we were in two VA hospitals. I was able to be awarded a federal supply schedule contract by the US government. And today, we're in over 250 VA hospitals and clinics all around the United States, helping veterans manage their chronic pain. All of our devices are manufactured in the United States by medical device contract manufacturers based in Brookfield, Connecticut, in North Attleboro, Massachusetts, and in Wabasham, Minnesota. The devices are typically shipped to us in a pallet. We get typically one pallet shipment per week by a box truck, no 18-wheeler, and
So just, just so we're clear, like a pallet, so you're saying it's like six, five or six feet tall, four feet wide?
No, four feet tall by four feet wide by four feet deep.
So that's the amount of materials that come a week to you guys?
Correct.
Okay.
And so the material comes in, the space is gonna be divided approximately half into inventory warehouse space and then half into administrative space. In the inventory warehouse space, the pallet comes in, we do AQL testing, so we have to do a quality check on all the product that comes in, so there's some functional electrical testing. This, the product gets stored in inventory. We also get product back that might need repairs from the field. If a patient drops a unit or it's dropped in a clinic, we take it back. We would maybe replace a battery, replace a cable. If it's a serious repair, it goes out to our contract manufacturer. And so the other aspect of the inventory warehouse space is we pick, pack, ship, so we're packing product with accessories that go with the product that are shipped directly typically to veterans. We also shipping, you know, our medical devices and their accessories to, to pain clinics, to hospitals, et cetera. Just an example, so you have an understanding of what I'm talking about. We have a clinic unit, which I don't have here to show you, but this is our home prescription medical device. It's handheld, runs on a battery system. This is an over-the-counter version of our medical device that anyone can buy over the counter. And so that's, that's kind of what goes on in the inventory warehouse area. On the other side, it's administrative. We have sales, operations, finance, quality regulatory, product development, and you know, all the typical things that you might have in a medical device company. There'll be five offices, a conference room and space for cubicles for the rest of the employees. There's no noise from the inventory warehouse side. Testing doesn't make any noise. Shipments are all occurring typically between 10:30 in the morning and 3:30 in the afternoon. There's never a shipment earlier than that, and there's never delivery trucks coming before that, and there's never delivery trucks coming after that. UPS comes typically twice a day, typically 11:00 AM to deliver things to us and 3:00 PM to pick up product that we're shipping out.
Wait, Brad, so you've got the one pallet, generally one pallet a week comes in a truck?
From our contract manufacturers.
Right, and then, and then you've got like a UPS or a FedEx coming twice a day typically during business hours. Any other truck traffic that's coming and going for you guys?
No, not at all.
Okay, and?
Basically, three Amazon deliveries coming in.
Yeah, what, about what my house has. Mostly my wife, so the I like nice stuff too, don't get me wrong. Brad, about how many employees on a typical day would you have there?
I would say anywhere from like 12 to 15 employees tops is pretty typical. Not everybody's in the office every day. Some people are working from home two days a week. They're coming in the office three days a week. That's, that's pretty typical. There's people in operations have to be there five days a week to get the product in and get the product out.
Okay, and are we talking like eight or nine to roughly five kind of shift, or are there people working late at night or early in the mornings?
No, some employees start at nine, some start at 8:30, some employees leave at five, some leave at 5:30, and that's pretty typical. I might be the one person who stays a little bit later.
Any, any weird sort of smells or lights coming out of this?
No, there's, there's no chemicals. It's normal lighting. There's not any bright lighting that's gonna shine through the windows. The inventory side is with, really within the building. The offices are along that long wall that has all the windows, so yeah.
Okay, I think if you guys have more questions for Brad about BioWave's business, fine, otherwise, I'm gonna let the architects go through the plans. I am gonna talk at the end about, a little bit more about the application, but we'll go to the architects and to Brian Dempsey on traffic. Ryan and Greg?
All right. Good evening, everyone. Ryan De Silva with DB Architecture. Greg Biancardi and I are the architects working with Moca Westport Holdings on the design of the new BioWave space. We'll walk you through the exterior and the interior architectural elements of the project and take any questions at the end of the presentation. I'm gonna hand it over to my partner Greg to talk about the exterior part of the project, and then I'll get into the interior aspect of the project.
All right, good evening, Greg Biancardi, DB Architects. Just walk you through the exterior as Adam mentioned. We are converting that paved walkway on the side of the Fasano space to a drive aisle. And the drive aisle will continue around the Fasano property or lease to the BioWave, to the rear of the BioWave space. There's a little area for turnaround for truck traffic and then two ADA spaces. Other parking will happen in the other parts of this, of this site. And as Adam mentioned, I think we've according to the site and parking space is required, it's we're about, there's about 50 excess spaces already. So there's no additional need for parking spaces. Next. So the BioWave space in the, in the back is split up half into warehouse space. And this is where that receiving of the pallet will occur. Here's the door that that will happen at. It brought into the center of the warehouse space where it'll be unpackaged, batteries tested, and then QC tested, and then repackaged, and then stored along either side of the space on shelves. In the light blue is the office space for about 13 to 14 employees, and some of those employees are also spending time in the warehouse space. In the back area, there is a kitchenette, and then along those perimeter windows are all interior office spaces and conference rooms. And we'll show you what those look like as well. And you can see the stairs over on this side outside of the property. This is a rear entrance. And this is, you know, basically 10 feet below grade at the parking space above there. So as Adam was mentioning, we're, we're kind of sitting down below the average grade and you know, any neighbors that are looking over really can't see the building, especially since they have a fence there, and there are a couple existing houses on the property that are blocking view of the, of the building, this area of the building. Next. This is the main door. On the right-hand side, the white door, this is the existing space. Over to the left where you see the different brickwork is where the access door, the delivery door will happen. It's actually two large, large doors, around an eight-foot by eight-foot opening. And you can see that in this rendering. And the new, new door, and then three new lights above the main entrance and three lights above the garage door. These are all downlights. Color temperature 2,700 Kelvin to 3,000 Kelvin, and they all have shrouds with cutoffs. There are a few more lights that will happen at the rear entrance of the building that will be added. This is, again, that same space. The area where the brick is different is where the new garage door will occur. And there you go. And there you go, there'll also be a man door next to that garage door. And next. This is the rear entrance and you can see here that we're on nine or 10 feet above grade at this rear entrance point. We will, we will be adding some lights in the back here, same style as the ones you saw before with the light cutoffs. Same color temperature as well. And here's an image of that space. So basically no more modifications. Here are the lights. At the garage door and then at the main entrance. And then at that rear entrance area. So really the only exterior changes that we're making is, you know, those additional eight lights. New coats of paint, a garage door and a man door. And then, you know, we're replacing some of the existing doors as needed. And next. Here's the specs for the light. And again, the color temperature will be twenty-seven hundred to three thousand. And basically the cutoff, it's only a downlight. So next. Now, but Ryan, you can go through the interior space?
Sure. So I'm going to walk you through both the office component and then the warehouse component of the new design, which we've put together for, for Brad and his team. So this is the first view at the north entry. This is the north foyer for the new proposed space with conference room to the left. And this is along the western wall of the existing building. The second view is showing your western wall with offices flanking it. We have glass partition walls to allow for natural light to penetrate into the space. For there's a formal seating area at the entry and then cubicles off to the left in the back. And then the middle here is a demising wall that demises the office proper and the warehouse space. Going down the hallway to this, the third view here, looking back towards the north. You have your cubicles to the right and to the left are the offices and the conference room entry where we started. The fourth view is from further down the, the hallway, southern tip of the, the new design, showing the new southern entry, coming down the steps, the new kitchenette in here, which you'll see in the next view. Foyer in the, in the background and then in the foreground, you'll see a staff, sitting room, break area. Moving into the, the next image here, you're, you'll see the, the new kitchenette design that we have open to the entry, southern entry. And then the break area. Turning around essentially three hundred and sixty degrees or one eighty, looking back towards the northern entrance. You have the conference rooms and offices on the left side here with the light coming through the cubicles. And then you have your two entry points, this one of which being here into that warehouse space through these doors, which have now been changed to double doors, which you'll see in the plan. So going through that, that threshold, looking north again towards the drop-off area for the warehousing space. This is looking north. And you can see in the key plan more or less where we're located in that space. And this is the demising wall between the office and the warehouse. This is the last image, kind of walking right through the garage doors and the man door into that space looking south. You'll see open shelving on either side, existing structure in the middle. And then, you know, assembly tables for products. And that concludes our part of this presentation. And we'll take any questions. Adam, do you want to take questions now or at the end?
If they have got questions now, they can fire away.
Sure.
All right, seeing none. So I guess Brian, Brian Dempsey on traffic?
So again, for the record, Brian Dempsey, I'm a licensed professional engineer with the firm DTS Providence Design Engineering. Again, to do this project, we had discussions with TMP who requested a traffic generation study. So with that study, which was reviewed by TMP, we looked at what the traffic generation would be during the peak hours. So, and we looked at it a couple of different ways. So in the AM, your peak hour, AM peak hour, you'd have about twelve to fourteen vehicle trips. In the PM peak hour, you'd have about fourteen to fifteen peak hour trips. As was discussed earlier, there'd be one truck that would, a box truck that would bring one pallet of goods per week. Daily, there'd be two to three UPS or FedEx box trucks. They would not be big trucks, there would not be any tractor trailers or anything to that extent. That would bring, bring or pick up materials during, during the day. They'd be in the area anyhow, so they would be typical trucks traveling. So they're really not, you know, Amazon will have everything in one area covered at, together. So it doesn't bring more new trucks into the neighborhood. Again, it'd be about thirteen to fifteen employees, some of which would be working from home a couple of days a week. They also wouldn't all come in at the same time. So there would not be a significant impact on traffic. That was reviewed by TMP and agreed on by them. They had a full sign off on the traffic on this. And it can answer any questions, otherwise they'll pass it back to Adam.
Mr. Dempsey, I have a question for you regarding the delivery trucks. Do you know if the art or wallpaper usages currently receive any deliveries from FedEx or UPS?
I would gather they do, but I, I do not know specifically how many. I don't know if anyone else can answer that.
Yeah, I don't either. If anybody on the board knows it's on the panel, they can speak up or, or we just don't know.
I mean, it's same, I work in an engineering office and similar size and we get, there'll be two to three deliveries from UPS or FedEx that come to our office and the other offices in our building.
All right, if there's not other questions on traffic. So the application, right, so again, it's a, it's an amendment on this special permit. It is a pre-existing commercial use for the property. It was referred, I did mention earlier, it was referred to Westport P&amp;Z and they, they provide non-binding comments. They, they didn't talk to us, they didn't ask us to present, they didn't get any, they didn't ask for any mater- I don't know what materials they reviewed, but, but it did go to them. And they, we got a letter back or you got a letter back with sort of what I would describe as more sort of shotgun style unsubstantiated concerns. They had concerns that Westport residents should get more notice of the special permit application than what Norwalk provides. And that, that it's okay for the Norwalk residents, but on the Westport side, they, they be given additional notice. They said that adding the three box trucks and the dozen or so employees to Newtown Turnpike had the potential to impact local traffic conditions and pose a safety hazard. They said it might violate the fire code. They had concerns about, at the landscaping, there might have big concerns about lighting, about odors, about noise, that we would be introducing a commercial use into a residential neighborhood and that you shouldn't allow commercial uses. But then there, there, they actually concluded by saying, while the reuse of an existing commercial space is generally supported, the commission believes that additional scrutiny is warranted to ensure this modification will not adversely impact the health, safety and welfare of Westport residents. And we don't have any problem with any level of scrutiny you want to give it because it's not going to impact the health, safety and welfare of Westport or Norwalk residents. And, and sort of what's telling about their approach, this also went to WestCOG, which is the West, you know, the Western Connecticut Council of Governments. They're a member. WestCOG is a forum for cooperation among those municipality members. And they advise the region on land use and economic emergency and environmental planning. They reviewed the application and found the modification would be, and this is a quote, "an appropriate and beneficial use of the subject property with limited impact on surrounding resident, residential districts in either municipality", which I think is about aptly stated. It is consistent with the POCD and your special permit criteria. And in, in the POCD, it says, "The purpose of the zoning regulations are to conserve the value of land and buildings, protect in general to allow the beneficial uses of property." And this does allow for a beneficial use of this property, which isn't suited for residential use. And if it weren't allowed to be used for a commercial purpose, it would likely remain unoccupied. The, the, and I actually, I, I won't go through all of the, the POCD. It is in all of our narrative materials. But, but it really is, we're, we're, we're keeping jobs in Norwalk, keeping a great business in Norwalk that is going to have really no impact on the neighboring community and probably far less of an impact than if Moca expanded into the back of that building. The, again, there's, you heard there's no, no impact from noise, odor, fumes, dust or artificial lighting other than obviously the, the two trucks during business hours, the, the Amazon truck type truck or the FedEx is going to make a little bit of noise on the way in and a little bit of noise on the way out. But that would be, I think, a far stretch from saying that's unreasonable. I think it does comply with all of your regulations. I, I hope that you allow the company to, to stay here in Norwalk, approve the application. And unless there's other questions for us, we're happy with you opening it up to the public.
So just before you do that, this Tom Hofstadter, Adam?
Yes.
Can you hear me? I just want to let the commission know that Mo- Fasano and Moca currently get UPS and Amazon deliveries now. So it'll be on the same route as UPS, the, them getting their pickups. And Fasano gets a couple of deliveries a day, box trucks, small trucks, things like that. So we believe that most likely that it's just going to be incorporated in the trucks that are there already.
Thanks. I think that's it.
No, I'm trying to unmute myself. I'd like to ask a question. Are the, are the delivery trucks anticipated, UPS or FedEx anticipated to use this driveway and go to your back door as well?
I believe so, Brad. Yes.
Yes, yeah. That's the point of the building, the driveway around the back.
So I, I under- I understand that. You, you have a, an interesting application, as your attorney probably explained to you because this is a true non-conforming use, been there before zoning in Norwalk. So the thing that we have to decide as a commission on these things is whether this is such an intensification of a non-conforming use that maybe we're not going to grant it or is it going to have an impact? And I, I'll tell you, I'm not a fan of commercial uses in residential zones, but I do recognize that this is a non-conforming use. But I just wanted to say, I was down at a client's place a couple of weeks ago, one of the boatyards I represent. And a sixty-foot boat was on a trailer with a guy walking behind it with a remote control. And I had a rather substantial copy machine delivered to my office, which had to go through a garage and up a flight of stairs. And the truck stopped, a robot got out, picked up the copy machine, carried it through the garage and up the stairs. So I just wondered to myself, when you're talking about one four by four by four pallet a week and then a couple of UPS things, why put the neighborhood in this application through that when you could easily get one of those machines and, and, and have your stuff walked around? That's just what I was wondering. And your answer is not going to probably sway my vote one way or another. I just couldn't help but wonder that.
Well, there's no, there, there's no easy way to get a pallet full of medical devices that are, you know, they're all in small individual boxes. But it, it would be unwieldy to try and bring it around the other side of the space or i- in, you know, if it's raining or snowing. You know, our devices can't get wet, our accessories can't get wet. So the, the truck's got to come right up to where the double doors are going to be in the back. So it can easily be moved in. The pallet can directly be moved in with like a pallet jack and you can just roll it in and then we can package it.
I understand what you're saying, but I also, I also find one of the most annoying sounds in the world, the backup alarms on trucks. It wakes me up and even worse, it wakes my dog up or wakes everybody up and stays up for half an hour. So that's
Only during the middle of the day though.
Something I was thinking about, if you don't think it's possible, then, you know, it's not, you don't have to consider it, that's all.
It just, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be practical. You know, from a, from an operation standpoint, we need to be able to have product come right into the space. And, you know, other, otherwise the space wouldn't make sense for us. And that was, that was a critical aspect of, of choosing this space that, that it, you know, there was the, the possibility of making that happen.
Okay, thank you.
So I have another question. Is it possible to split the pallet? Does everything have to be on one pallet?
Yeah, unfortunately, the, the manufacturers don't want to ship us bits and pieces multiple times a week. You know, the best we try and do is, you know, one pallet a week. We also don't want to get, you know, four pallets at a time. And, and that's unwieldy for us to be able to take all that in and do all the AQL testing that's required. So, you know, one, once a week seems to be, make the most sense if we can do it one pallet depending upon, you know, not each manufacturer shipping once a week. You know, we're, on average, we're getting one pallet a week, one from one manufacturer, one from another manufacturer, one from our accessory supplier. And that's, you know, that, it, it's just from an operation standpoint, it's the most efficient way to do it.
And how long is your lease?
Ten years.
Your business may grow within the next ten years.
Oh, yeah.
And you may have much more traffic coming in and out.
No, there wouldn't be more traffic coming in and out. We, you know, the, the one pallet may turn to two pallets on the same delivery. So I think this space is going to be perfect for us for the next ten years and taking into account the amount of growth that we anticipate.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, if not, I want to take a break before we start the public participation. So we will take a, how long should we do? And a ten-minute break?
No, five.
Okay.
Five, I'll fall asleep if we break for ten.
Four minutes would do like a ramen.
Perfect.
And then four minutes.
Or we could just do nine, make it.
Come back at nine o'clock.
Yeah. We'll be back at nine o'clock, that'll give us a
Eight minutes.
What's the difference, an eight-minute break? Okay, thanks, thanks, see you all in eight minutes. Start the We'll call it back to order. And we will begin the public participation, part of this public hearing. Again, like I said before, you get to speak once. So say everything that you need to say. You don't have a time limit, but you know, it does not really help to take longer than is, is necessary to make your point. Give us your name and address when you begin speaking. And Brian will tell you how to raise your hand and he'll bring you over into the meeting.
Sure, so for anyone who'd like to speak, use the raise your hand tool to the bottom of your screen. You'd click that once and if you're dialing on a phone, you would hit star nine. With that, we had keys. Um, with that, we had Keith Boxer.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm Keith Bozer, uh, uh, twenty Columbine Lane. Uh, I hope you got the pictures I sent. Adam had some beautiful pictures of the property. But he does, he didn't have, the pictures showing my pictures of what I see right now presently. Everything that happens back there, I see. I am the closest to the, to Mocha building. The, the building itself was around from nineteen twenty, like he says. But let's go back to nineteen ninety when Martha Stewart had the place. She installed an eight foot fence that gave us the privacy that we needed and she wanted. Over time, that eight foot fence has fallen down and Mocha replaced it with a six foot fence. That we have no privacy whatsoever, me and my neighbors. We are the closest people there. We see everyone that comes in and out. I have been trying to work with Mocha about adding an extension on this fence to, to put it back to an eight foot fence the way it was. When Martha Stewart was here. We're going back and forth. We still haven't come to an agreement. We even said if you, if you can put a two foot extension up over my property because we are so close to everything. Where this biotech's going to be, it appears it'll be parking right. Behind my property and we'll see everyone as they come in and out. We have no privacy. It's very irritating. It really is. This is a residential neighborhood. We moved here for the peace and quiet. It is peace and quiet, but now we see everything. We do. And we, we're getting over with Mocha. They have come over the other day. We have gone back and forth. We still haven't solved anything yet. You know, we want our privacy and I'm sure the people on Westport side have the same issue. Like I said, when Martha Stewart was there, it was an eight foot fence and we could not see anything and no one could see anything. On our property. Now, anyone can see, I don't know if you saw the pictures I sent with the letter I sent to, uh, Steve. I, I see they were online, but I don't know if you guys saw that. But y'all welcome to come over my house and see what I'm talking about right now. Any one of you can come over anytime and see. You know, we are a residential area. It's a commercial building, but we want our privacy. That's what the way the neighborhood feels. I'm sorry. I hope you understand. Gee, I, I lost it, Mark.
Mark!
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
We can still. Still with us.
Yeah, sorry, I, I lost it, uh.
Oh, you're still there.
All right, uh, I guess. I don't know, I, I, I guess that's it. I'm sorry, but yes, I want you to understand, we need our privacy.
Right, uh, next we have, uh, John Runkie.
Uh, hi. Yes, I do not think a ma- manufacturing area should be in a residential neighborhood. I think that should be in an industrial neighborhood. I've worked in manufacturing, you know, for, for.
Don, can you just give us your address real quick? Sorry, sorry.
John Runkie and my address is One Thistle Road, Norwalk, Connecticut. And I'm also, you know, a, a lot of these manufacturers I work for, they all had deadlines. You know, and they got busy and, you know, the, with the company being there for ten years, they're going to expand, they're going to get bigger, there's going to be more traffic. I mean, they say there's not going to be much traffic there now, but, you know, if business does well, it's, the traffic's going to triple, quadruple. And then you got your seven AM, you know, to ten AM work hours where they, you know, they have deadlines. Manufacturing companies, they all seem to have deadlines and they start really early so they can get the product out in time or get the job done. And then they end late. You know, and so you got noises early and noises late. I mean, they say they aren't going to have much noise now, but, I mean. That, that, you know, what, there's, there's what they say and then there's reality. I, I, I just do not think that you should have a manufacturing center in a residential neighborhood. This is a quiet residential neighborhood.
Okay, next, uh, we have Kim Runkie.
Oh, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so I'm, I'm Kim Runkie, One Thistle Road, um, the husband, uh. I mean, the wife of John Runkie. I, I have the same concerns as my, um, neighbors. Um, so I can, I could see the building in the back. Um, and I am concerned about the noise. Um, I'm sure there's going to be noise throughout the day. Um, you know, this is a quiet residential neighborhood. We've lived here for thirty years. And I've never had any problems with, um, you know, Mocha or. When Martha Stewart was there, but I am concerned about the manufacturing and trucks coming in and so forth. So I just wanted to state my concerns. And that's about it.
Thank you. Next we'll have, uh, Peter Faust.
Peter Faust, forty eight Crawford Road. Um, I just appreciate the time to hear my concerns. Uh, there's several issues that I believe. Warranted the B and C committee to decline this request. Firstly, the decision is setting a precedent for allowing manufacturing activities in a residential area. Yes, there is a special permit, but this is for museum. Isn't this widely different than BioWave? What happens if Mocha goes away? What comes of this property? I direct businesses every day from small privately owned companies to Fortune one thousand companies. Typically, a profit seeking business grows, yet Mr. Siff states this will only, will, will not have any growth over the next ten years. Is this truly honest? I asked the committee, why is this necessary? How does it benefit Norwalk, Westport or neighboring communities? There are numerous underized, underutilized commercial properties throughout our towns that could greatly benefit from investment and refurbishment. It would be a shame to see more of our residential areas converted for commercial purposes when there are already other viable options available throughout Norwalk and Westport. Early on this call tonight, it was great to hear about the investments into older properties throughout Norwalk. Why can't BioWave do this to an established commercial zone? Furthermore, this will lead to increased traffic and commercial activity, which should not be what we promote in our residential areas. The impact of commercial traffic mainly speeding on a residential streets continues to be a challenge for all of us. This presentation fails to even show the entrance into nineteen Newtown, where I live directly across from. To address the comment from Mr. Rona, a concern about the backup alarm. Mr. Siff stated that it doesn't matter about the noise because it's during the day. This is completely out of touch with a residential town and a community. I have a one and a half year old daughter that sleeps every day at one P M. So yes, this does impact me and my family. I do find it insulting that Mr. Blank states this location precedes. This residential area and additional comments from outside parties stating this is a net positive for this location. I ask, are these comments from neighbors? As someone committed to preserving my home, which is from eighteen thirty-five, a house directly across the street. I feel strongly about maintaining the integrity of our residential areas. Furthermore, I do find it equally insulting that Mr. Siff is utilizing the narrative that these products help veterans. I'm a proud veteran who served in the U S Air Force, served proudly overseas. And I believe that my neighbors and I deserve the right to live in a residential area where we can raise our children without having neighborhoods breached for commercial uses. Again, the promotion of, of a museum is the type of exceptions we should be striving for. If there's ample space at this facility, perhaps it could be an opportunity to explore other activities that further promote arts and culture in our towns. As a parent to a young child, I'm keenly aware of the importance of maintaining our town's culture and historical integrity. We have wonderful places like Mocha, the Lovett Playhouse, Museum of History, that contribute to the charm and character of our towns. We're living in a home from eighteen thirty-five. I'm committed to preserving a part of Westport history. And I seek your help in maintaining our neighborhood's culture and history. I kindly ask for the support in preventing establishment of manufacturing facilities within our small historical neighborhoods, especially when they're not zoned for such purposes. Many thanks.
Next we have Emily, and then just a reminder for, say your name and address for us. Emily, if you're talking, we can't hear you. I lost her on my screen. Let's try again, Emily. Still can't hear you if you're speaking, Emily. Um, let's go to the next person and see. Just check your mic settings. It's, it could be that, um, your input is incorrect. Um, so we'll go to Dory Harris.
Evening. Um, there's no way I can share a screen just to show a map, correct?
Uh, you could just give me a second. I have to promote you to panelist.
All right, now we'll figure out how to do it. Wow, okay, um.
At the bottom of your screen, it'll say share and you should be able to click that and there you go.
Thank you so much. Um, okay, so I just wanted to show a map. Uh, this is Mocha right here. It's Newtown Turnpike, Crawford Road. Uh, Peter Faust is actually there. Uh, I think the other people who are speaking are over here. Um, I'm three driveways up. I'm five Newtown Turnpike in Westport. My name is Dory Harris. I have lived here my entire life and I have a pretty good handle on the history of all of this because. Not only has that been there my entire life, but I live in the house that Walter Listberger owned. And you can drive by my house and see the little initials over the, the driveway, which I had restored over the gate. Um, anyhow, my point being is that. This has, um, Mocha or. This building right here has been there since the nineteen twenties. It has had a number of different. Uh, businesses in it and it has been manufacturing, but it hasn't been manufacturing since nineteen sixty-six. And all of these houses here started to go up. Uh, you've got, uh, nineteen fifty-nine or a couple of these, nineteen sixty-five. My house, obviously predates that eighteen thirty-five, similar to Mr. Foss. Um, which was a huge estate for Mr. List, Listberger. It was a. Polo field, tennis court, and a swimming pool. Again, my parents bought it in nineteen sixty-four. All of this was purchased with the intention of a residential area. I have nothing against BioWave. I think it sounds like a great company, been an E M T for thirty-four years, sounds like a phenomenal product. I would love them to be there, but not as manufacturing. I think all of this, all the property values, potential environmental, you know, nobody, nobody moves into a building. And, you know, they've outgrown their old space. They're coming here. They're going to grow. They're going to, um, you know. Need more than one pallet, need more than two pallets, more people, more, more trucks. Uh, that does affect the neighborhood. We are a residential neighborhood. As soon as you open that door, I really feel that, you know, maybe Fasano Fabrics moves out and another manufacturer comes in and they're going to use. This application, if you approve it, as a foot in the door to have their manufacturing. And now, now we're really affecting the neighborhood. And I, again, I think Mocha's been a great neighbor. I have nothing against BioWave. Um, I, I do. Um, take a little bit of offense at the dismissal of what the Westport P and Z was suggesting about possible. Um. Issues with the safety. Um, that's not a great corner right there on Crawford Road. People come out there. Um, there will be more traffic coming up in, into and out of. Um, I'm. Almost certain the neighbors directly right here probably have, even though there's a sign out front, they're just moving in. They probably, you know, have not, I don't, I don't know, perhaps I'm wrong, but they're going to be greatly affected. Um, this is a residential neighborhood. All the, all of us bought in, I mean, I officially bought the house a few years ago after. Uh, my mother unfortunately passed away. I didn't anticipate it having a manufacturing facility there. Um, and it hasn't been one for over sixty years. Um, we turned the corner. This was, this is a residential neighborhood when all these houses were built. Um, so those are, I guess, my concerns. Um, it just doesn't go with the character of the neighborhood to have. A manufacturing facility if, uh, welcome them if it's not a manufacturing facility, a hundred percent. Um, it doesn't sound like that's possible, but it would be great if it were. Um, you know, the fact that they wrote, uh, that it was. Right likely to remain unoccupied and the zoning restrictions are prohibitive for small business to operate in the space. It's not. It's prohibitive for a manufacturing facility because it's not zoned for manufacturing. So I. Beg you not to turn it into a manufacturing facility. Uh, um, it is, this is a residential neighborhood and it's going to change it. Um, not maybe from BioWave, but from subsequent businesses who might move in. It's going to give that foot in the door. And I just would appreciate if you would both this down. I will stop sharing. And, um, I thank you for your time.
Can you hold on a second? Okay, next, um. My name is Roach. Um, just remember to say your real name and address for us. If you're speaking, we cannot hear you. And we'll try Emily one more time.
Hello, I am so sorry about before my, um. Browser had the mic. Um, blocked, so I wasn't able to speak before, but I'm sure that you guys can hear me now. My name is Emily Runkie. I am the daughter of Kim and John Runkie. I live at One Thistle Road, so my house is next door neighbors to the people. Who have the claims that they can see over the fence and I would just like to say. They are completely utterly right. Um, I was told that you guys had. Um, trees blocking the way, especially when Alex, I believe it was, was showing the photos of the property. Um, those pine trees, most of them have been removed. And we can already, at least from my perspective, hear trucks going into Mocha. So the increase of that would be disruptive to the neighborhood. Um, it is a residential area and I am very, very concerned about. How that would affect, you know, property values and the peacefulness. I've lived here my entire life and that property has never really been a problem. And now that these people are kind of moving in, no disrespect to Mocha, they've been lovely. Um, I am worried about the neighborhood changing and for someone who grew up here. And who used to be playing on the streets when I was little, the idea of a manufacturing company coming in. And disrupting that is. Very heartbreaking and it's scary and it's not. It's not something that I think that a lot of the families in this neighborhood would agree with. That's all.
Okay, next we had, um, Maria. And Maria, I think you're on your phone. You, to unmute, you'd hit star six.
Hi, can, can you hear us?
Yes.
Okay, this is. This is Mark Roach. There's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. The first one was that this does set the standard. For an incremental. Um, change going on and on. Um. This is a small incremental change and then potentially after this one, there'll be another small incremental change and then another one. Before this whole site is developed into a large manufacturing. Um, endeavor. So we would like to make sure that, you know, our voices are heard and that we don't agree with using this as a. So we would like to make sure that, you know, our voices are heard and that we don't agree with using this as a manu- manufacturing site. Um also I second a lot of the people who have talked about the growth plans of BioWave and that the, you know, if somehow this is approved, I think there needs to be at, at a minimum maximum occupancy um statements in the approval so that, you know, growth is managed and it's not expanded beyond what um it should be or what is, you know, thought to be reasonable right now. Um since I'm on at Two Thistle Road, um I would like to know what the future plans for that site is, where there's a wooded area along the driveway and on the back. Um I'd like to know what's going to go on there, there, when Moca was first approved, um there was, I raised a concern of the bamboo trees that had been planted by Martha Stewart and her team. And they've been expanding. That was supposed to be addressed by Moca and it never was, so those bamboo trees are spreading outside the fenced area and starting to encroach on my property. The lighting that everybody says is, you know, not problematic and will be, you know, uh addressed with, you know, down, downward facing lights. Where I am, I constantly get light not from any outside lights but from the interior lights. Cause there is a wood fence and then there's a non-solid fence. But I get light over the fence into my upper floor. So that would have to be addressed. And then I know there's um a lot of questions about how is this going to affect property values for the residential, you know, neighborhood. Once we allow a manufacturing site in, so has anybody done any looks at um the impact to the existing homes and the property values there? Okay, that's, that's about it for me. Um so like I said, you know, we would like to have you deny this request and um thank you for your time.
Okay, um and then if anyone else is interested in speaking, use the raise your hand tool, um and with that we'll move on to Mark Vincent.
Okay, so uh we live at uh sixteen Columbine. And after Moca moved in, we're a two-story home like the Bojers are. And John is, uh I don't know about the guy at number two, cause he's in the back. Um but the fence doesn't help us at all. The only thing that helps us is the greenery during the summer, which you've seen pictures of. Moca has not done what they said they would do, so the trust in Moca is not there from the neighborhood. Now, I can't complain about the manufacturing only because we don't know where it's gonna go. The, your board can vote whatever way they want, we just have to say what we wanna say. And hopefully, change your mind if it's already been made up. Uh he seems like an awful nice guy, um but manufacturing's not supposed to be here. Um I would worry about, I, cause I don't understand the manufacturing, if you're just putting parts together, then you're gonna have no waste. You have to worry about water waste, you have to have separation of your water waste, just like a a restaurant does with their oil and their grease and all that stuff, so we don't, we don't know his type of manufacturing. A little bit more of that might help and calm some people down, um but I can agree with everybody else that manufacturing shouldn't be up here. But what are we gonna do? The problem we all have is that the lighting that's coming from Moca is ridiculous. In the winter, we had to put blacked-out shades to try and cut the light down. And the lights stay on all hours of the night, not, then they decided to shut some of them off. And the ones at the front door, cause I faced the front door of Moca, they're all the way down near the ground, seven feet off the ground, and they're lighting up the back of my house in the winter. They've done nothing to address this, they've been asked to, but they've never done anything to address this, so that our concern, one of them, is that Moca has never done what they said they would do, so why should we trust them now? Thanks for your time.
Uh if anyone else would like to speak, use the raise your hand tool or hit star nine if you're dialed in on a phone. We have Janelle. Uh Janelle to unmute, hit star six. Alright, can, let me see if I can. Had you for a second.
Brad, did you mean to say star nine before?
Yeah, star nine to raise your hand, star six to unmute.
Oh, gosh, okay.
I think it tries to need a little prompt to say unmute, but um or suppose if you're on an iPhone, you may be able to just uh hit your microphone key and it should un, unmute yourself. Well, that's, let me see, Janelle. She's having some technical issues, um as well, so I'm not sure if you wanna hold on it or if you'd just like to close the hearing at this point.
Yeah, unfortunately, I think we have to uh we have to move on. We need to give Adam like an opportunity to uh rebut. Well, part of the public participation portion and go to the rebuttal of the uh the applicant.
Thank you, um so, so guys on the, on our team, I'm gonna talk for a few minutes and then Brad, I know you and Greg have, have some things you wanna say, we'll, we'll, we'll we'll let you speak um uh when I, when I finish up, uh okay, uh so, so responding to some of the comments, um I'll try to kinda go a little bit in order, but Keith Bozer was the, the neighbor over at twenty um Columbine Lane. Um and, and his concern was he wanted an eight-foot fence up rather than the six-foot fence that, that he has uh now. And um and we're willing, we're willing to do that, I will note that that's a sort of an existing condition, has nothing to do with the application and again, he's not facing the, the, the new exterior work, but, but we'll, we'll we will do the eight-foot fence, um which is what he, was his uh complaint. Um there was a concern about it being open all hours of the day and night and expanding. Uh obviously, you guys are no, um you're not afraid to put conditions on approvals, um and, and we expect that and we hope you all approve this and, 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 and use your judgment in, in uh reasonable conditions with respect to um the hours. There was um a, a, a bunch of concerns about the actual quote manufacturing and, and I said when we started, maybe we didn't tell you enough, uh you know, i- it's by manufacturing, these goods are made elsewhere, they're brought in. On, on some of it, there's a little bit of assembly, meaning like putting a battery in the product. Um or it comes as a, as one product and they put a little instruction manual in it, you know, the safety manual and a couple of little goodies. Brad, I mean, what else is there, there's no
There, there is no manufacturing that would take place at that location. So people refer to, oh, manufacturers start at seven in the morning. Our contract manufacturers start at seven in the morning in Brookfield, Connecticut, in North Attleboro, Massachusetts. We're not a contract manufacturer, our products are made elsewhere, the products come in, we had a user manual. Uh we might add a travel bag with the device, we add some electrodes, um we're, we're pick, pack, ship and, and get it out, there's no noise. And there's no manufacturing and the hours are eight-thirty to five-thirty uh at the two extremes. So no one, no, no one's there at seven in the morning and no one's there at eight, nine o'clock at night. The lights, when the last person leaves at five-thirty, the lights get turned off. I just wanna, I can't stress that enough, everyone's worried it's a manufacturer that's coming in, we don't do manufacturing there. I, I live locally in the neighborhood, I live on Cranberry Road, three houses down from Newtown Turnpike. The, this place is like half a mile from me. Um I, I'm very cognizant of the beautiful residential neighborhood that we all live in. This is not gonna affect property values, it's not gonna affect anything else. Uh we're, we're doing a good thing, we're helping people in severe pain. And the, a, a, a large majority of our business is helping veterans in the two-hundred-and-fifty VA hospitals around the country, we're very proud of that. And I'm not saying that uh for any other reason, that we, we do good and, and we wanna continue doing that and we think this is a, a really great place.
And so Brad, that, the, one, just let me just jump in for a minute here, the, the lighting issue, um currently there's no blinds on that space. Um as part of this proposal, we are proposing putting in internal blinds uh on the BioWave space which, which will help with the internal light issue that was raised as a concern. Um and remember, like, the, the use that we're doing historically is far less intense um than what there has been. The, I'll show you. Let me just show you, so there was comments, you heard Mr. Faust, who lives over here on Crawford, was concerned about the FedEx or UPS truck, which is, this is where it backs, right? This is where the, the backing is here, it's over a thousand, I think it's eleven hundred square, eleven hundred feet from Crawford and it's behind the building, like there's, you're not gonna hear anything over here, wo- would you hear a, a, a truck or a car leaving the property, maybe you'd, you'd hear that, but that's not gonna be disruptive to anyone's day or uh life. Um the the, the, the residential zone, I mean, the other thing to keep in mind is this is a huge property and like, aside from, this is a great reuse of the property and it's about as least intense as you could ask for of a commercial user. I mean, most will have larger hours or they'll have more deliveries or they will make noise, I mean, this is a pretty nice use to reuse this building, if you wanna keep the neighborhood residential, this is about a six-acre parcel zoned on twelve-thousand square foot lots. Now, you're not gonna get it, but if you had subdivided this out, that's over twenty homes. Do you know how disruptive it would be to the neighborhood to take this building down and, and do a twenty-unit subdivision or even a five-unit subdivision? This is, this is the, this is the nice solution, not making it residential. Um the, 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 the growth uh issue, in, in a little, in some sense, that's, that's not that's not real, yes, there could be some limited additional product that they could get, but they're constrained on their space. They've got this space, there's a, there, there, there's not much room, and you saw the architecturals, there's not much room to sort of grow it in any significant fashion, um and I know, oh, what if Fasano leaves or somehow Moca's gone, well, okay, in that sense, I guess there, there could be growth, one, we'd have to come back here, um and you could say no at that time, but number two, it means that you're, you're eliminating another commercial use. Uh so it's kind of a, in my view, it would be a wash if they grew, but we're not at that point and we would certainly be back in front of you if there was ever gonna be that kind of growth that would require us to come back because they were expanding out into additional space. Um the let me see if there's anything else that came up. The property value concern, there's, there's pretty clear case law in Connecticut that you need, you need an appraiser, you need an expert testimony that there's gonna be a, a, a decrease in your property value for that to be uh a a consideration used against an applicant on a special permit uh application, it can't be a speculative, there might be an impact on property values. Um so I think, I think I've answered the questions, Greg, I don't know if you had anything that I've missed that thought needed to be covered.
Uh I, I think you covered, Adam, I think you covered a bunch of the, the sort of answers I, I had. Um and I, I do want to reiterate from what I understand from Brad, he's basically receiving these these products, unboxing them, charging batteries and uh re-boxing um them, so it's rema- uh manufacturing classification, it's more like a storage since, you know, most of that area is warehouse space. Um and if that, if people are worried about, you know, further it becoming a manufacturing uh place, I, I don't think that's it, but that's, it's just a classification of the building. You know, it could be a S-one type of use, which is just a storage facility, but I, I think the only thing in the code that says um, you know, there, since there's lithium-ion batteries, basically cell phone batteries that everyone has, you know, that's in there and I, I think under the codes, uh that's um why it goes under that light manufacturing, but if, if there could be some sort of other way to classify it, then I'm sure Brad would be fine with that, I don't wanna speak for him, but that's all.
Think, I think that, that's, that's really all that we have unless there's further questions from the commission.
I had a quick question.
Curiosity question, um the same thought that uh, that was just discussed crossed my mind as well. Um do, do you know what the uh wallpaper guy's permit is? Anybody?
I can, I can address that, he's actually a manufacturer as well, would be the same classification.
So then this, this isn't new then?
No, I, I was thinking about that at, during a portion of the testimony that had it not been for the commission um condition about change or modifications to the plan requiring commission approval um and say that the wallpaper guy, the wallpaper guy actually went in after Moca was approved. So if the wallpaper guy had expanded or this applicant had not proposed the, the additional driveway area or the loading dock, we would have just issued the permit in-house as of right, so I don't consider this really an expansion of that and it is true, the manufacturing uses are non-conforming uses, so is Moca as a museum in the residential zone, so they're kind of locked into their spaces where they're at in terms of the, the, you know, area they can operate. It's probably also good for the public to, to note something that, so Norwalk's zoning regulations have three separate definitions and define industrial users three different ways, we have a boutique manufacturer, a light manufacturer and a heavy manufacturer, so the only reason that this particular applicant is considered a light manufacturing facility is technically they're doing assembly. And you know, as they're describing assembly, it's just kind of putting pieces together that come in different forms, they're not building the uh or, you know, pressing the materials here and making new materials, so the, the light manufacturing has restrictions on outdoor storage, on, you know, fumes and odors and light and intensity. So this is a, about as benign a manufacturing use as you can have there. So if there was going to be a new manufacturing tenant that was neither the wallpaper guy or or this particular applicant in the future, we would look at what their business operation plan was and determine whether this was um an intensification of that or not, and then we, you know, we, if it was an intensification, we would say, no, you're not allowed to do it. But if it was something along the same lines, we'd say, yes, they could do it, but again, they're constrained to the square footage that's within the, the building now for the two manufacturing uses.
Steve, when the wallpaper uh company went in, was there much controversy about them?
No, it was an over-the-counter permit and it, that went in because the, that No, it was an over the counter permit and that went in because the, that historical use of the site has been manufacturing. And I would say from a neighborhood, um, you know, impact point of view, I'd say Mocha could, you could argue is probably more intense than either of the manufacturers are.
And Steve, it looks like Mocha owns the property and Fasano is the tenant, is that correct?
That's my understanding.
And so this applicant would be the tenant as well.
Correct.
And with any approval, could we get Mocha to do things that the neighbors wanted because it's not necessarily part of this application, but it's their building?
Oh, absolutely. In terms of the screening and landscaping, yes. And looking at the lighting, I think that those are all fair game.
And then Pete, you guys would, would approach Mocha because they are the landlord?
Yeah, I, I, there is a condition of the approval and the resolution that talks about a revised landscaping plan being submitted and reviewed staff prior to getting a permit. So we can look at that if you're so inclined to move in that direction.
Thank you.
Uh, can I just, um, just, just so we have the record clear, the, and you, you know, you, you obviously can do whatever you, you'd like with respect to landscaping and screening, and we're going to be bound by it. But I will say that there was a comment made that the photos that I showed, uh, didn't reflect the current conditions. Um, I will represent to you that I personally took those photographs this weekend. And the, no trees have been removed in the last three days. Um, so that absolutely, the photos I showed you are absolutely the current conditions at the property. And if you think that's insufficient landscaping, I get it. You, you do what you gotta do, but those are the current conditions.
But this is, this is interesting.
Adam, we, we should not be having a conversation with Adam.
Uh, I, I don't think we had closed.
I don't think we closed.
We, we were just taking questions.
Asking questions now.
Okay, I, I, I apologize for that. Um, a question for, uh, Steve, I'm inclined frankly, uh, to, um, uh, support, uh, uh, this application. Um, but there were several, uh, complaints, uh, they, they weren't all very specific. But is it possible to go back to the original approval for Mocha? And take a look at what, uh, the, our requirements were back then? And assure ourselves, uh, that they are meeting those requirements?
Yeah, and I actually have that up in, if you get to the, um, point where you're taking action, I can bring that up and we can look at those again. It's only one page. Um, you know, there, there was one specific to the lighting, so we could, that might be, might be one that should get revisited. But yeah, we can discuss that at, at the later point.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Anna, you had a question?
Yeah, I was looking at that. You've got the, um, zoning commission minutes from 2019, I think, where Mocha was approved. And all of that is the same meeting where Three Elm Crest also was approved or something, same meeting. Um, but, uh, my question was, have there been any zoning violations or complaints that came into Norwalk about the light and sound from this property?
Yes.
There was.
Go ahead, Adam. I, I can. Right, so, and, and Tom can still, so, so the, yes and no. Uh, the, Mocha hasn't received, and, and Tom will correct me, but Mocha hasn't received any complaints about lighting, uh, until, until now. Um, but, but there was a complaint about, uh, events occurring at Mocha. Um, uh, kind of like Gray, Gray Barn style. Um, and, um, those outdoor events haven't occurred since. So we've sort of cured that. I think we've, we haven't hashed out with, with staff exactly whether they'll attempt to resume them as under the old permit or whether we can need to come back in front of you, uh, if they're going to be outdoor events. But that was the only issue that's come up, uh, that I'm aware of.
And Steve, a few comments ago, I just want to make sure I understood what you were saying. So if they tried to expand the footprint of the building, that would be intensification of the non-conforming use. But adding a driveway sort of around the side of it isn't? Or we, it's sort of on the fence and that's what we're really deciding?
So, right, so if, if they added a, yeah, so they, if they added something significant to the building, like, you know, a 5,000 square foot footprint and expanded the manufacturing space, yeah, that, that would be, um, an expansion of that non-conforming use. Um, assuming that was going to be, you know, manufacturer was going to occupy that space. For this piece of it, no, I wouldn't say that the driveway i- is an expansion of the non-conforming use. Um, it, because the use isn't changing, the area isn't changing. It's just, you know, how they're accessing the facility is being modified to accommodate this particular tenant.
Thank you.
Julie Ludwig, you had something?
It's Tom Hofstadter, but I go under the name Julie Ludwig. It's a, it's a mistake. Um, I just want to, uh, uh, just tell the commission. Uh, you know, during, during the open part or the public hearing part, there was discussion about us not keeping up our end of the bargain with lighting and with the, what happened with the bamboo. That may have happened in, during the time that we moved in. Commission has to understand, we were not the owners when we moved in. We were, GHP owned the building and we were leasing from them. So if the, if it did come into P and Z as a complaint, it may have gone to GHP and they may not have told us, but we were, I mean, this is the first that, I've been on the board for 12 years. And we are right now in the midst of, with one, one owner that's adjacent to us helping replace fence. The owner that talked about the six foot fence, we're in the, the, where we want to order it so that is eight feet. And we correct that problem. We want to be a good neighbor, but we have not ignored something. If we didn't know about it, we certainly will address it. But I think that the, the process took place of where we weren't the owner of the property when those complaints came in.
Are you, uh, open to addressing the, uh, concerns with the, the bamboo?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
I think we can close the public hearing now. Uh, it looks like all the questions have been asked and answered. Um, do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, is it second? And a second? Okay, uh, should we bring up, uh, the proposed resolution?
Sure, maybe I'll, if it's okay, I'll bring up the, um, prior approval first, just so you can see those conditions. Cause that's in the, the resolution that we put together for tonight, it references this approval.
Okay.
Is that big enough or do you need increased?
It would be helpful if we can make it a little larger.
How's that?
Yeah, that's great.
And as I mentioned, I'm not talking about condition number nine, so that would be one that would, should get addressed, um, right, prior to a permit for the, for the new space. And I can pull up the other, um, resolution if you, if you're ready. Or I could click the button by accident and not give that.
Yeah, can you bring it back please?
I'm sorry?
Oh, you're bringing it back, right?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay. Thank you.
You addressed the, the lighting and, and number nine.
Yeah, and I, as I mentioned, I don't know, I don't know if every fixture that's there now, um, is, um, adhering to that condition or not, but that would be something that should get addressed.
So they have to remove some trees or landscaping to make the driveway. It's number one, that's why this comes up.
Correct.
Okay. So it's, okay. And who will answer to any other conditions that we put on this, Mocha or the applicant?
So ultimately it's the property owner's responsibility to, you know, ensure that their property is complying with the, um, conditions. Cause if, if like, if they were and we just got into like loggerheads on things, we would cite the property owner as being in violation of the, uh, the approval, because the approval runs with the land. So if it was, you know, if, uh, BioWave goes out and somebody else comes in there that's doing something very similar, they would be bound by this, those same conditions.
Okay.
And we're ready to move on to the next to, to the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
So I started, um, and again, this is pretty short because it picks up the prior conditions. Um, I did put, started something at number five in red, if you wanted to address, um, address something with the hours. And number three deals with the landscaping, which I think is the issue that we were talking about. I didn't have anything in there about the bamboo, if you wanted to add some more specificity to this.
Steve, is the hours of operation handled in the other? Um, the previous one?
Uh, that was, I think it had to deal with.
Was that just deliveries and garbage?
I think it was more so garbage than.
Okay.
And number three, can we put the, uh, installation of an eight foot fence? Everyone seemed to agree that they would do that.
Yeah, I would support that.
And not just, um, at the property that took the picture, but I don't know if it's all on one side or all three sides, but. It seemed to me that the, that the applicant's portion of the property is where there is more screening, but the complaints are coming from the neighbors on the other side where there is just a fence and there's absolutely no screening, at least in the pictures that were submitted to us. So why not do fence and some screening? And maybe they have to put some screening on those neighbors' properties because maybe their driveway goes right to the edge of the fence. It's a little hard to tell.
Are you thinking like a vegetative, like screening?
Yeah, evergreens. I mean, they grow fast, they make a nice screen in a very short amount of time.
Yeah, I think this condition covers all eventuality related to that.
Great. Similarly, do you think it covers the, uh, like removal of the, the bamboo and such?
Uh, I would put that in there because that's, I, you know, to be honest with you, that's not, if they didn't tell me that was out there, I probably wouldn't have known.
Well, it's good screening, but it's also very invasive.
Yeah, yeah, there's better screening to be had, yeah.
Double edged sword.
Uh, assuming I'm spelling bamboo right.
Hey Steve.
Yes, sir.
Um, my experience with bamboo is it's impossible to remove it. Uh, maybe it would be better to say, uh, control it so it doesn't go on neighbor's property.
I'm fine either way, however you guys.
Because I mean, it is good screening, but if it goes onto the next door neighbor's property, they may not like it. It's a lot easier to control it than it is to eradicate it.
Yeah.
Okay, but this.
And we can get some, some torches and just go hang out there for a little bit, just some flamethrowers.
I bought one, but I'm afraid to use it.
Oh, that sounds like fun. I'll come over. Not that I'm any handy at all, but to play with fire like that.
I think if you burn it, it just grows back.
You have to keep burning it.
So it would be that annual adventure.
Be a ritual. Uh, okay, does anyone care about these hours of operations or have strong feelings of what they should be?
It seems like the prior approval covers the delivery use case.
Uh, right.
It sounds like all of the use is indoors, uh, outside of the delivery trucks. If there's.
Well, they say their hours of, uh, operation are eight thirty to five thirty, so we could limit their hours of operation to eight thirty to five thirty, that's.
I'd, I'd be careful with just that specific because it could change, you know? It, I was thinking compliance with the noise ordinance, that might.
I mean, I wouldn't want to hinder them like in that way. Like they're not going to, I, I think the thing you want to prevent here is the like going to like midnight situation, starting at five AM, not the like, oh, I gotta work till six thirty, seven, because, you know, I'm just sitting in the office. You know, because remember there's a lot of operations here too, right? So like the accountant could be sitting in there needing to file something in the evening and, you know, and someone, someone getting stuck on a footfall like that. I mean, I don't feel strongly about having hours of operation limited. I don't know if anyone else does, so I leave it to whomever feels stronger.
If, if we limit the deliveries.
Yeah, the deliveries under the prior condition, I, I didn't, I just rewritten it again. Um, so the hours of garbage pickup be no later, no, sorry, no earlier than seven AM, seven AM and no later than seven PM. And that any delivery or deliveries be no earlier than eight AM and no later than six PM. So those conditions would hold.
They already exist and they're, and they're reasonable. And they fit this operation.
Right, and then there's no different than someone coming for a museum tour at five thirty or eight o'clock or whatever, like, I mean.
Right.
Yeah, I think that's where I'm hung up on the hours of operation is, it's just for this one third of the building and not for the overall site. So I'm, I'm not sure how that improves the, uh, impact.
Anybody have anything else?
It's good to meet and, well, that's so far as I'm concerned.
Just need to update the effective date, Steve.
Oh, yeah, that's true. Thank you. We're June already, aren't we?
Uh, what's time?
June thirteenth?
We're still working on those, the zoning rate, right?
Steve, in, in three C, do you need to include the word vegetative screening? As opposed to just adequate screening?
Well, that was good.
Yeah, it's a combo of the landscaping fence.
Yeah.
And once again, if one of these businesses ceases to exist there, if another business wanted to come in, they would still have to come before planning and zoning.
Um, if, so if it was, and I'm going to make it a very simple, um, simple, uh, analogy. So if like the, the wallpaper guy goes out of business and then you had a printmaking establishment, not necessar-, it wouldn't necessarily come back to the commission if they didn't change anything in their operations from what's taking place. not necessarily, it wouldn't necessarily come back to the commission if they didn't change anything in their operations from what's taking place now. But if a, the, the BioWave goes away and then somebody comes in and they are a tool shop where they have, all of a sudden they have a bunch of drill presses and different things and they have more noise odor. They have a paint booth or something like that, then we would say, okay, that might be an expansion of the non-conforming use. So it really, anytime we get these kinds of scenarios all the time, so we're looking at they have to just give us an operations plan and then we make an evaluation on whether we think that's consistent with what was there prior or is this something new and is A, not allowed or something, B, the commission could technically approve.
Okay, yes, I do think we should be sensitive to that in that, in where it's located in that residential zone.
You could, I mean, I, it's, it depends on if you're comfortable with the wording, but you could put a condition, a change in tenant needs to come back to the commission for approval. You could do something along those lines.
I think that's a good idea because I think the neighbors, they have a point, you know? It hasn't been manufacturing since nineteen sixty-seven. That's a long time ago.
I ask you a quick question?
No.
No, sorry.
The applicant speaking.
I don't think so.
I'm hoping I have this spelled right.
Okay, are we ready?
Quick question on item two here with this tenancy. Is that going to only apply to the portion of the building that we're looking at in this application or does that apply to the, to the larger building?
I think this, the way I'm interpreting this would be the building.
Okay, because we're modifying the prior special permit.
It's running with the land.
Yes, yeah, okay, thank you.
And that doesn't necessarily mean just to be clear, it doesn't necessarily mean a public hearing and a new special permit application. It could be just them coming to the commission verifying the use. And then at that point, you'd have to make a determination on whether, okay, this is this is consistent with what was approved before, or this requires a brand new special permit application, or you know, and possibly we would flag this ahead of time. We would say, wait a minute, this is just not something that's and all consistent with the prior uses and we don't think you should approve it. So that's the way I would leave it.
Thank you. That's good context.
Hey, are we ready to vote?
Yes.
Do we have a motion? Is there a motion on the floor? I think there is.
I think so.
Yep, so Nick made it. Didn't you make, Nick?
Yes. Remotion.
Have to redo your motion to accept.
Full acceptance.
Second.
Okay, good. I think then we're ready for a vote. If we can do a roll call.
Certainly, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Very excited for this company moving into Norwalk and excited to see where you guys grow. Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Batchnick? And you're muted.
I guess we have to come back to.
Oh, I did it too fast. Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Langgallis?
With reservation. Yes, I like the idea of the company, but I also feel that the neighbors had some valid points. Yes.
And I think Ms. Wells, you are the last hope.
Hey, yes. So it's unanimous.
Thank you.
You know, if you don't mind, I think we need to make some decisions here. We have three other matters. One of them is very, very short. And then the discussion, but I think we need to break at eleven. That's been our policy, not to go beyond eleven o'clock. Is there anything we should do here to reorder this? Or just continue through it and see how far we get by eleven?
I, I would think you could get through the three camps prior to eleven and then if.
We could move the discussion and the discussion of the two bills that we wanted to do, we could move that to the end of the aquifer protection meeting that we're doing next week. That should be forty minutes. You know, that's not long by any means, but Alexis wanted to do it separately so that people could be relaxed and ask questions. Does that make sense to you, Brian and Steve?
Yeah, I had, I had one memo I sent out with three proposed text changes. If you have time to get to that, we would refer that out if you're inclined, but we can do that after you take care of your other business and see what, see what you're feeling.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on here to, uh, next one is twenty twenty-five dash twenty-six CAM dash PMB Services LLC, one forty-five Water Street. Changing use from storage to office within the coastal area management boundary, report and recommendation.
So as I'm sure you all saw, I don't have any materials for you because we did not receive any. I just have the draft resolution for denial, which I will pull up on the screen. Essentially, this property is in violation and our deputy zoning enforcement officer had sent a notice of violation to the property owners stating that they needed to obtain a coastal site plan approval for their current use. And their contractor did submit an application that was insufficient. They were not responsive, did not provide any of anything that was needed, like notification to neighbors or vice materials. And we're, yeah, we're not responsive to staff reaching out, did not provide an extension, so this is the draft denial. I'm not sure. Oh, actually, the deputy zoning enforcement officer did send out a citation to the property owner today, so there is enforcement action being taken since they failed to obtain the coastal site plan review.
Good. Is there a motion to deny this application?
I'll move.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say.
I think we could do this by a show of hands, don't you? Steve or Brian or Amelia, you're in charge of this. I'm sorry. Do you think we could do this by a show of hands?
Yeah, there's few enough, few enough people here that I can see all of you now on one screen, so show of hands.
Almost in favor of the denial.
And it's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
A quick question, Amelia. Did we hear anything from them? Were they ducking and dodging, for lack of a better term, or?
I think I got maybe two emails back from the applicant, which was mostly just asking questions that I'd previously answered. So not dodging entirely responded twice, but I reached out more than that and it was, it took a while to get those responses.
I can, I can tell you, I've been dealing with this group for over two years and they have just been a disaster.
Looking and weaving.
Thank you both for the assessment.
Okay, now the next matter here is twenty twenty-five dash thirty-six CAM Land Tech, eighteen Marion Avenue. Instruct a new single-family residence and dock with associated site improvements on a vacant lot adjacent to Norwalk Harbor. Report recommended action. Is, who is here representing or Land Tech?
I am, Madam Chair.
Okay.
For the record, my name is Kurt Lowenstein. I'm a licensed professional engineer in Connecticut with Land Tech. I'm here this evening representing the property owners of eighteen Marion for this coastal area management application. I'm also joined by Maria from ADA Architects, who was the project architect here. I know it's been a long night. Do you want me to give an abbreviated presentation? Would you prefer just a little Q and A? You know? Okay, so I will just highlight the coastal resources, some of the stormwater, some of the plantings, and then I know Amelia will will speak to some of the staff reporting. I'm just going to share my screen quickly. Okay, everybody can see this now. Okay, cool. So this is an existing vacant property. It was once sixteen Marion. End of last year, there was a first cut that split this vacant lot into two lots. Eighteen Marion is the lot on the water. There is, the entire property lies within the flood zone. Most of it lies within the AE twelve zone, while the seawall and waterward side is in the VE fourteen. As far as coastal resources go, we do have flood hazard area. We have beaches and dunes, estuarine abeyments, tidal wetlands, intertidal flats, as well as shellfish concentration areas. Everything but the flood hazard area does lie waterward of the seawall, which is also where the CJL line jurisdiction is. So my clients are proposing to construct a new single-family residence here. It will be fully FEMA compliant. Elevated to just over, finished floor will be just over sixteen, so that's, you know, four plus feet over the requirement for an AE flood zone here. So we're belt and suspenders for future flood height rise. Flood vents will be installed for anything below the BFE. There'll just be garage and crawl space, so no finish space, which is in informants with FEMA. We are in a tidal area here and we do directly discharge to the Norwalk Harbor, so the focus here as far as stormwater components go is treatment. So all of the new impervious areas, so that would be the the roof area, the driveway, the driveway will be asphalt, will be connected to a new underground cultech system, which will promote infiltration. That system has been sized to treat the water quality volume in accordance with the city of Norwalk drainage standards. The proposed patio on the back will be pervious, so that will have crushstone below it, which will, again, similar to the cultech system, promote infiltration into the ground. There is a new dock proposed and I recognize that waterward of the CJL is a deep jurisdiction, but there is a portion which I've highlighted here that does fall on the landward side, so that is a part of this application along with the balance of the project. There'll also be a deck in the rear that will be above grade, open slotted, so not an impervious surface. As far as soil erosion sediment control goes, we are proposing hay bales back, or cell vents back with hay bales along the seawall. The site is very flat, so we're not expecting a tremendous amount of soil disturbance where we would be overly concerned with erosion, but nonetheless, that will be installed during construction to provide additional barrier there. Your standard construction entrance and stockpile air will, will end up in the front yard here. Landscaping, which is probably the biggest piece that we may have some minor contention with. There were some existing trees along the frontage of Marion Avenue. Some of them located on this property, some of them on the adjacent property not owned by my clients that were taken down. The tree that is closest to the buffer area or to the seawall area was an evergreen tree. But my clients did install an entire row of arborvitae's along the southern property boundary and then right up to the seawall. So I know staff has requested additional trees along the buffer area. I would request that you, you know, put some stock in the, in the trees that they did install to the south as well as they are installing one holly. It is a small site. We don't want to install large trees too close to the house. There is a risk of damage to any house, you know, if you're installing large trees like oaks or maples, so I would request that, that the planting as far as trees go is, as we proposed, is accepted. The back end key will be fully screened with inkberry, which is a, as opposed to a boxwood, it does have a good habitat value and coastal value as well as screening. It'll form a nice hedge, but also provide a nice wildlife habitat here. And then the final piece, the buffer along the wall, we're proposing a five-foot buffer. There'll be a mix of swamp milkweed, blue flag iris, seaside goldenrod, New England aster and little blue stem. It's a great combination for a coastal mix here. And it will, you know, there's things along the pollinator pathway that this hits. This also, it's all salt tolerant. Again, providing nice habitat as well as an aesthetic and functional value. We are capturing all of the impervious areas, as I mentioned. And I think that five-foot buffer is sufficient given the, the size of this site. So I would request, you know, that our planting plan as shown be accepted. But I'm open to any questions or comments you may have.
Which flood zone is this in again, Kurt?
Predominantly the AE twelve zone, so back a couple, so this line here, the orange line, to the right is AE twelve, to the left is VE fourteen. The limwa line actually runs along this as well. But the VE fourteen would govern on this side. To the left, that is, waterward.
So do you know how high the first floor is off the ground? Is that your department?
Yes, so the finished floor of the new residence will be just above sixteen, sixteen point one seven technically, but we'll say sixteen. And the finished grade around the house on the, the waterward side is around elevation eight and a half. And it, you know, it ramps up slightly to, you know, closer to nine on some areas to the east of the residence, but generally, you know, you're looking at seven to eight feet of differential between the finished floor and the, the ground surface.
Thank you. And is FEMA in that location fourteen and the city wants it to be sixteen?
No, FEMA is twelve. The town is not, the staff is not, was not requesting. Are you referring to the VE standard requirement that was in the recommendation? So it's not an elevation thing. We, we would meet elevation wise of either standard VE or AE because we're plus, four plus feet over what the base flood is there. And even if it was fourteen, we're still sixteen. The, the question, and you know, I won't speak for Amelia because I know she's here, is would we build the foundation to VE standards, which would be breakaway walls? I think we're in an AE zone. We are meeting the FEMA guidance and I think it's, it's a little bit of an, an overreach to require you know, developments in an AE zone to meet a VE zone. So we would respectfully decline, you know, making that, that upgrade, so to speak, to a VE standard that's not required for this zone.
Thank you. Nobody else is going to ask, do you know how the height of this house compares to the other new construction that's one lot away? I think they're the same developer.
Fourteen Marion?
Yes.
The one that's not, there's this vacant lot in between that one. It'll be similar in height. I don't recall what the exact finished floor was. Maybe Maria, if you're still on, if you recall, but I believe they should be pretty similar in height.
Thank you.
Madam Commissioner, Maria Genovese from Andriopolis Design. I can answer the question for you. The finished first floor of fourteen Marion was at fifteen, datum fifteen. This house is one foot above because the zoning regulations changed to be the base flood plus two feet, so we had to add the additional foot so that we have enough room in between the finished first floor and the base flood to run the floor joists, the duct work, all of that, all of that in that allowed space so that it's not in the flood zone.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Is that the end of your presentation?
It is unless there's any further questions or comments, but yes, that, that, that fits everything for me.
Okay, are there any further questions?
Uh, maybe for Amelia to see if there's anything else that staff has for this application? I'm not sure if that's where you were going, Galen, but wanted to raise that.
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I think Kurt covered everything. The applicant was fair, they addressed.
No, I think Kurt covered everything. The applicant was fair. They addressed everything in my preliminary review letter. I do think the application is consistent with um the Coastal Area Management Act goals and policies. The, yeah, the flood zone suggestion was just because, you know, there's no existing house there now and CAM does look to reduce threats to life and property in flood zones. So when the application was received, I actually didn't have the foundation plan, but noticed that they were, they could potentially meet VE with the um the first floor elevation, so asking what they were doing on the first floor and just letting them know that if they did build to breakaway standards, um you know, if the flood zone changes in the future, which very well might become in the VE at some point, um you know, it would already be
A big state of water.
To a higher standard. And then, yeah, aside from that, the only other comment I had with the revised plans was the landscaping. But I can pull up the draft resolution if you would like.
Yeah, why don't we get a, why don't we get a uh a motion and then we'll post draft resolution?
I'll move to proof.
Okay, we got a second?
I'll second.
Okay, good.
So the standard CAM conditions really for this one, and then the only, I guess, um point of discussion might be condition number seven. So depending on if you guys are happy with the landscape plan as submitted or if you would like it to be updated and approved by staff.
Amelia, would you prefer that we keep seven in? Would you like to keep working with him on that buffer?
Um, I mean, yes, I I would. That's why I included it. Again, it's your decision, so.
Okay.
It's absolutely fine if you want it removed.
I'm okay to keep it. I I don't know if others have a strong feeling.
I'm fine with giving it as well.
Hey. Are we ready? Does anyone have any other comments or questions? Are we ready for vote?
I think so.
Can you take that? Oh, Diana, did you have a question?
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Um, Amelia, can you do a roll call for us for this?
For Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
No.
And Mr. Williams?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time. Have a good night.
Okay, our next uh matter is um twenty twenty-five dash thirty-seven CAM, Tim Roth, Rat, twenty-two Harborview Avenue, raise an existing single family residence to be FEMA flood compliant adjacent to the Norwalk Harbor report, reported recommended action. And this is yours again, Amelia, right?
Yes, I am, I was working with the applicant. Tim, if you're here, if you'd like to share your site plan, if you'd like me to share it for you, just let me know.
Yeah, they didn't unmute my camera, but uh can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yes, um, we're just trying to raise my son's house, which he lives right next door to my old house. Uh, in Harborview, we've been residents there for forty years, and I want to say I appreciate this late night meeting for us. I really do appreciate. Um, we submitted a new landscaping plan just recently. I think Amelia got it, I hope. Um, it's all to what she recommended. And it's just to make the house flood compliant, exact same house, just going up in the air.
Yeah, I can, I'll pull up the site plan for you, but it it is a very straightforward application. They're not changing anything about the house. The only small change is uh reconfiguring the rear deck, which would actually go further away from coastal resources. But this is the uh the site plan showing limitations and erosion controls. Again, the applicant responded to everything outlined in the preliminary review memo, and I think this application is consistent with the CAM Act. And they did just submit a um a revised landscaping plan, which was one of my conditions of approval when I pull up the resolution. So can either, I mean, if you just leave it and you can know that there's already, they've already submitted a plan that would be approved by staff.
Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, I'll move approval of the uh resolution.
Okay, good.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, now let's bring up the resolution.
I think the conditions you'll find are very similar to the other recent application.
Looks good.
Yep. Are we, does anybody have any comments, questions?
Just a question, with this type of application, do the neighbors have to be notified?
Yes, they should be. They're required to be notified within ten days of submission, and the applicant did provide um proof of notification of the neighbors.
Okay, thanks. In these lifts in the like tight neighborhood, it's very disruptive to the neighborhood, so I think the neighbors would want to know.
I believe Mr. Roth owns the property right next door, very close to the house.
Well, that's helpful.
Which is just, in this case, yeah, exactly.
Everybody's very cooperative in the neighborhood because they realize one day they may have to toss, which a lot of them have already. But I understand your concern.
Okay, we ready for vote? It seems to be an echo here. Um, Amelia, do you want to take a roll call vote?
Sure. Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Bryce?
Yes.
Mr. Schulman?
Yes.
Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Ms. Lankowski?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Langgallis?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Amelia.
Thanks very much.
Uh, then we'll move on to the last, or the next to the last the discussion, uh twenty twenty-five dash forty-one R, planning and zoning commission, zoning regulation text amendment to Articles one, four, and nine regarding nonconforming parking, clarification on the permits required for cluster housing in the Silvermine Tavern District overlay, modifying where commercial recreational establishments are permitted and associated limitations. Discussion.
Sure, and I will be super, super fast with this. Um, so these are, I I guess, considered along the lines with um different cleanup things that we've done, um and and a couple corrections too, so I'll just take them one at a time. Can you guys see my screen? I'm assuming, yes?
Yes.
Thank you. So sure. So this would be a new clause inserted, and it's, it's kind of to head something off before it becomes a problem, I would say. Um, and we put a couple of exceptions in there, which I'll go through real quick. Um, I I was just thinking about, because someone kind of suggested, well, if parking existed and they just built a new building, then they could keep the parking in a location which was kind of contrary to one of the main goals of the regulations, which was getting the parking, requiring the parking to the rear of the building. Um, so that kind of, I I think this is more of a belts and suspenders clause than anything else. We did carve out a couple of exceptions. One would be if you're in the civic or hospital zones, would give you a little more kind of leeway where I'm where you could cite things, or if you're within the um heavier and light industrial zones, you could keep a road parking in front of the building just because those uses are just a little bit different and they don't end up with those large kind of parking areas in the front that we typically would see like a retail or a restaurant. So that's kind of uh the the crux of that proposal. Um, the second one, which has kind of been an ongoing discussion for a couple of years now, is how to deal with commercial recreation. And there's a a myriad of different kind of I guess, commercial rec uses. The ones that are really problematic are like the the big trampoline parks or the big um kind of field houses where they have six soccer fields and those kind of things, or the hockey rinks, because they tend to draw a lot of people, and they draw a lot of people all at very specific times. So they lead to a lot of traffic issues, site circulation issues, and they kind of can overwhelm the site. So those ones are kind of problematic, but within that definition of commercial rec, you also have like just regular entertainment kind of venues that seem like they're really appropriate for like an urban setting, like in and around Sono. You might have those kind of places where people can go and do stuff. Historically, uh pool halls have been excluded, and I think that goes back to an era when, you know, they pool halls had a bad reputation, drew a specific crowd, and those were kind of problematic. I have reached out to the chief of police, Chief Wells, just to kind of make sure he's okay with including that. But we have seen, um, you know, you guys have approved axe throwing, you've approved archery. We've seen indoor golf driving ranges be, you know, in and around these kind of commercial uses. So we think allowing them with limitations on how big they can be seems like it it's probably good and and it's good for give, you know, people opportunities for things to do in these areas that are, you know, within walking distance of where they live. So that's kind of why we've floated the changes that we've floated. And the third one is really a clarification. You may recall back, um prior to the adoption of the new zoning regulations, there was a proposal to modify the boundaries of the Silvermine Tavern Village District, which added several properties to the north of the existing tavern with the idea being they showed us a conceptual plan. And at some point in the future, they would have to come back with a special permit application kind of showing you more specifics on the project and where those buildings would go. Unfortunately, the language wasn't quite clear on that, the need for the special permit, which is why we're also putting in this um belt and suspenders clause just to make sure it's clear that they do have to come back for the special permit. So those are the three changes. Um, if you have any questions, you're not voting on anything. We have to refer those out, so this would probably pop up on a hearing at the end of July. That was it.
Seems reasonable.
Thank you, yeah.
Look.
Five minutes, that's all it took.
Yeah, there really, that, that. That's great. Very, if nobody has any questions, we'll move on to accepting the minutes. Is everyone okay with that? Okay. Uh, so we need to accept the minutes of the regular meeting, April ninth, twenty twenty-five.
Move their approval.
Second? Okay, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Uh, April sixteenth, uh approval of the minutes of April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
No move.
Second? Come on, somebody second.
Well, Tammy second.
He's got her hand up.
Okay, did I didn't see, I'm starting.
Sorry, I was muted. Second?
Okay, all those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we're accepted. Then the uh minutes of May twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Is there a motion?
I'll move. Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Chapin can move all second.
Getting done.
Okay. Okay, uh all those in favor? All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so those are approved as well. Okay. Uh, comments of the director?
I I'll be very brief. Um, I did send out an email this afternoon about the uh email access for for the new uh Norwalk email addresses for you guys. So if you have questions, when you have time, please take a look at that and I'm happy to coordinate with IT on your behalf to get you set up as you need to be. Um, and just a reminder, you have a meeting next Wednesday night. I think it's Wednesday night for Aquafor Protection that I know you guys wanted to spend a little more time on some of those issues. So that I believe is set up. And I didn't know if you wanted to talk about um the other housing bill tonight, it's ten thirty-seven. So I mean, your next agenda does not look this bad in terms, I don't think there's going to be anything with strong public opposition where you're going to be here till ten forty talking about stuff. So if you wanted to punt for two weeks, you could do that. My guess is the um uh, the 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 new law is is going to be tied up in court for an extended period of time, so that delaying our own conversation by uh a week or two, either taking it up next week or the following, uh shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, I think we can we could take it up. Meanwhile, you you circulated the Prague uh analysis, so that's very helpful. And Nick?
Yeah, now.
Nick, of course, knows more than anybody about, at least the housing bill. Do you have anything you want to say, or you wait till next time?
No, I didn't wait for the general conversation. Obviously, people have questions. I'm happy to answer anything that I can, to the extent that I can.
I'm with you. We could defer this discussion.
Yeah. Happy to do it while I'm more awake, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, when we're waking to think.
Did you do it? We can keep, I mean, if you want to do it with the APA, that makes longer meeting then, or, you know, you can get the APA done in like an hour, I would think, the most. However you want to handle it, we'll accommodate.
To save you reading to the, the, I had, I highlighted sections that I think are the only ones that are relevant to us. And then also at the bottom of those bills, instead of having to, you know, parse through sixty pages, they have the summaries at the end, so you could just kind of read through the summaries. They kind of just describe the changes. It's helpful.
Thank you. Okay, are there comments of commissioners?
I just had a question. There was, is there something um that the P and Z is doing a Zoom meeting on the twelfth Thursday at noon on the eight thirty G? Or is that the? I got something about that and I wrote it down in my calendar, but now I don't know what it was.
Their training?
Yeah.
By by the guy who uh met with the council this week.
Is that, are we supposed to take that, or was that just a little optional thing?
That that's an optional thing if you wanted to take it.
Okay. Thank you.
Has the the information on the Aquafor meeting gone out yet? I I remember seeing something from Alexa saying she was going to send it.
I don't know if she's put the agenda together yet. Um, I can chat with her in the morning and and she'll get, I'm sure, you know, either way, I know she'd get it out to you before the end of the week, so.
So I have to just quickly say, I I couldn't, I couldn't not laugh when you talked about the axe throwing. It just reminded me of. He said alcohol and throwing axes. What could go wrong?
It's all wrong, I know, I know.
God, that was hilarious.
That was ridiculous. So, I mean, I guess it's so hard.
Yeah, it has to come to fruition, so.
Yeah, they're not there, so.
I think their heads chopped off or whatever.
I don't think they're there, so I think that went away, took care of it.
Oh, they never went in?
Yeah, there's somebody else that's taking the space now, so there's like, there's like a spec, some kind of gym, and then there's squash courts in there now, so that's kind of moving in.
Okay, is, does anybody want to uh make a motion to adjourn?
I enthusiastically move that we adjourn. Chapin, you want a second?
I'll match that enthusiasm in a second.
Favor, raise your hand. Yes, I think that passes. Okay, see you all.
All right, good night.
Good night.
Yeah.